This is only four of us. I'll step out of the room and then they can't start.
All right now.
You need some help?
You mad with me? I didn't do it.
Turn that thing over so you can see what's going on.
You don't seem to understand about fishing.
You don't want, you don't know what safety you catch them on.
Still, you had time to do a debt finder.
Oh, made it back, did you, with the jacket on?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we've already started, so, um...
I saw Sarah's power pump reputation I haven't caught to see.
Yeah.
Voila.
She's stuck on the other side of the tracks.
She's at Connors'.
She's right out there.
She must have come straight ahead down to that.
Does she not know there's a flower bridge?
Once you get down there, you gotta find a way to turn around and get back out of there. If we had that little indicator, if we had that little indicator says train ahead.
You can't see a train, you're in trouble.
You can't. You can't see it till you round the corner. Yeah, I've been down that way. You don't see it till you get around the corner and then you gotta find a place to turn around.
Don't provide enough turnaround.
I ain't turning my car around anymore.
Did the minute must have been like...
Maybe waiting on item B4.
B4? I know that they were waiting for the permit for Norfolk Southern.
Hey, Chris.
I caught the same train at two different crossings. I'd get it down to the other one and then waited for it again.
Number one.
I can run faster than that.
You too, Mr. Millman.
I am all good and ready. I have sent out to dispatch. We are good. Thank you.
Once again, the work session for the city of Villarica is, I'm calling it to order. First on the gym is item A, which is your hefty will be financial report.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
First, I do have the August monthly financial report, and it does look different than it has in the past. Um, I have, instead of showing it citywide, I'm now breaking it out to our major funds, the general fund and then the two enterprise funds, um, because there are some areas of concern. So if it's okay, I would like to see if we could do the presentation and then we can come back to this afterwards if that would be all right. Okay? First, I have...
Does that mean we should expect something bad?
It's high, then.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
It's a payday.
Are we allowed to take this?
It's a payday.
Hey, that's like everybody's getting an increase.
Mr. Macklin, is it okay if we take this?
You're Larry Kudle.
So far as I can tell, it's fine. Long as that's not being traded for a council vote.
Hey, I give you this, you vote.
All right.
Can't vote today, though, can you? I'll save it for Tuesday.
Okay. Today, I'd like to bring you an update on the cash and reserves for our city, um, the three major funds, which I'll get to in a second. So first, we're gonna talk about cash. And then the general fund, which pays for our governing body, the administration, which is your city manager, finance, human resources, code enforcement, et cetera. Then we have public safety, of course, which is police. We pay for animal control and fire. Public works, which is streets, we pay for streetlights and maintenance. And then, of course, parks and recreation and leisure services, excuse me, which includes the library. Go on to the next slide. This is our general fund cash. This is our operating cash for the general fund. That pays for those things that I just pointed out. In the past three years, you can see that the yellow line shows the trend, which is an upward trend in the past three years, which is a good thing. At the end of 2015, in our audit, we showed almost $6 million in operating cash for the general fund. Go to the next slide.
You click somewhere. Go to the right, go to the right, click on there, on the PowerPoint. Go to the right, go to the right, go to the right, down, click on that. All right, there you go. Hit F5.
Select your slide, yeah.
There you go. And hit space until you get back to where she needs you to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, we're on the enterprise fund. This is the water and sewer enterprise fund, which includes our water treatment plant, our wastewater treatment plant, distribution and collection, which is fancy terminology for the pipes that get your water to your house and your sewage away from your house. In the green box or the green star, you see that it says an enterprise activity is a revenue generating facility or system that provides funds necessary to pay for debt service. So that's why we identify it as an enterprise fund. It's supposed to make revenue. Here, it shows the operating cash for the enterprise fund. This is just for the water and sewer side. Those are negatives. At the end of 2015, we had a negative $710,354,000 in cash. I'm sorry, negative $710,354,000 in operating cash. Again, the yellow line shows a downward trend here.
How you have negative cash?
I'll get to that in a second if you'll let me go a couple more slides. Um, the next one is our enterprise fund for solid waste. This is our garbage and recycling, solid waste, which is the bulk items and the yard waste pickup. And again, this is supposed to be revenue generating facility or system that provides enough revenue stream for the debt service. And here is the solid waste. At the end of 2015, we had negative almost $200,000 in operating cash. The yellow line, again, shows the downward trend. So back to Councilman Carter's question. We have not over, go to the next slide. We have not overdrawn our bank account. We, our funds share a pool of cash, and the accounting system tracks which fund gets which cash. So for example, if someone comes in to pay their utility bill and customer service receives that cash, it goes into the same bank account, but the system tracks which fund that cash should be allocated to. So if property tax comes in, it's allocated to the general fund. If utility payments come in, they're allocated to the water sewer fund. If checks go out for the general fund side, the system allocates it and vice versa. The next slide. So just like an actual pool, it'll go up and down depending on the day's activity. Just like rain would increase the pool, the water, in an actual pool, deposits increase our pooled cash. And just like sun evaporation decreases the amount of water in a pool, so do checks and payroll and things like that. They decrease the pool. Next slide. Since the enterprise funds have been negative, like you saw, we're still able to function because the general fund cash covers those funds. And when I looked back, the water and sewer fund has been negative since 2012, which means the general fund has been covering the cash balances since then. For solid waste, I looked back as far as 2010, and it had been negative that entire time. So that means the general fund has been covering that cash balance. All right, that wraps up cash. Now, we're gonna talk about fund balance or reserve, which is a technical term in the government accounting side. In the business world, they call this equity. So if you take your assets and pay off your debt, what you have left over is equity. If you think of the value of your house less your mortgage amount, what you have is your equity. Go to the next slide. Another way to think of it is every year, the net income, again, that's a business term, gets dumped into the reserve. So like that picture shows, if you have net income every year, then your reserve grows. If you have losses, then it decreases. So why do we need reserves or fund balance? Two major reasons. First is it provides a cushion for emergencies. At a minimum, you should have three months, equivalent to three months of expenses. So an example is if your annual expenses are $6 million, which is close to our water sewer fund, and your monthly expenses are $500,000, then your fund balance or reserve should be at least 1.5 million. It also allows for large capital investments. We can think about the future, 'cause when will we need to expand or when will we need to replace infrastructure? In the general fund, our infrastructure are streets and parks, the gym, police department, buildings. In the water sewer fund, it's plants and pipes, lift stations, things like that. This shows where our reserve was for the three major funds in the last four audits. And it's not a typo there. We have, we changed fiscal year ends from March 2013 to December 2013. That's why there's two for 2013. But you can see the general fund in the green has grown to over six, almost six and a half million. And the water sewer fund has decreased to about one and a half million at the end of 2015. And solid waste has hardly been anything. I think it's negative at the end of 2015.
But it came back up in 15. Why did it come back up?
Water sewer fund?
Yep.
We'll see it later, but that means we had a, I was gonna say net income. I have to look at that. We had a loss, but it wasn't as big as in 2014. Because net incomes grow and net losses decrease your reserve.
I think I can answer part of that.
Okay.
Because we basically were operating as a cash basis because we weren't encumbering anything. I believe it was September 1st that I halted almost all spending, um, and until we actually could implement a encumbrance system and know where our cash position was. Fortunately, we did that because I think we'd gotten down to, I think, $17,000 in that checking account.
Okay, next slide. So at the end of the year, just to wrap it up, the general fund showed, like I said, over $6.5 million in our reserve. The three months, the equivalent of three months expense in that fund is over, a little bit over $3 million. So we definitely have that and we have more. So this reserve is healthy. That gives us room for investment. We can expand our infrastructure and make changes like that, or we can, it's, it looks healthy because, like I said, we can invest in the future. Next one is the enterprise fund, water sewer. At the end of 2015, our reserve was 1.4 million. Three months of expense in that fund is a little bit over that, $1,435,000. So we don't even have quite three months' worth of expense in that reserve. And we definitely don't have room to expand or think about future growth because if the population grows as fast as they are expecting it to, I don't know how we will address it with that reserve. The next one is the enterprise fund, solid waste. And at the end of 2015, we had a negative reserve, which means we didn't really have anything. Three months of expense in that fund is 233,000. So this fund is on life support when you look at the other two. It's risky. We do not have, we don't have anything for emergencies. If it's something catastrophic happened, we would not be prepared in that fund. So why don't we have enough cash and reserves? The bottom line is the rates we are charging do not cover the entire cost of the services we're providing.
You missed a, missed a slide.
There it is. All right, now we get to the candy bars. I don't think anybody took a bite, but if you had, you might have to give me some back. So those candy bars cost us a dollar, but we only charge 76 cents for it. So this is, the margin relates to our sewer customers in an example you'll see later. So you can see there's a 24 cent loss on that every month. And then with a senior discount, it's even more. The sales price is only 55 cents, so we're losing 45 cents on that. Another way to look at it, I had to put in a football analogy. Every month, we're losing 25 to 32 in this particular scenario. Our opponent is putting up 32, and we are only putting up 25, so we're losing that much every month.
Got that one, Verlin?
I got that.
Was that okay?
She worked hard. She worked hard on this one.
She's trying to figure that out now.
Okay. But on the senior league, we are losing 18 to 32 in that one scenario. Going on to the next slide, these are the actual numbers. I took the, this is 3,500 gallons on a residential customer. The base they would pay is $12, and that includes the first thousand gallons. And then the usage would be the next 2,500 gallons, and so they would pay 2140. Now, the operating expense is almost $18, and so we would make $3.44 on that particular residential customer. For the same usage on a senior account, they would pay their base of $5, which includes the first thousand gallons. The usage would be the same for the other 2,500 gallons, and the operating expense is the same regardless of who's buying it. So in that instance, we would lose $3.56.
Ms. Sarah, why the 3,500 gallons?
It was just an estimate I was trying to use.
Is it the average of our customers? Is it the average of seniors? Is it just a number?
I didn't look it up as an average, but I know it's a lower amount that we see, so...
Okay.
One thing on the operating expense, I've been asked how I came up with that. Again, this is the water rate. So I had to look at the water plant, the personnel that goes along with that, the infrastructure, the depreciation, just the day-to-day costs to maintain that. I didn't include any purchase of water because that would increase our cost. And then I have to add in, I took about half of distribution and collection because, again, we have the infrastructure of the pipes and the ground that get the water to where they need to go, to these houses. And also the fund, including the depreciation on that, which is pretty substantial. And then also the cost of administration. Because if you went to Georgia Power, they have a finance department, an HR department, they have a CEO. So you have to, in order for that enterprise fund to be like a business, you have to attribute some of those costs to the customers as well. So I took all those expenses, and that's where I got the $18 or $17.96 for the 3,500 gallons.
We're only losing $3.50 for senior. So seniors are getting the $3.50 benefit.
They're getting a larger benefit than that. That's how much we're losing at the end of the day.
We're actually paying them to take our water.
That's a good thing.
Okay. Just want to make sure you understood that.
If you go back to the beginning, it says enterprise funds are supposed to be revenue generating to pay for the debt service.
Seniors deserve it. They lived a long life to get there.
If you go to the next slide...
Hold on a second.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh is right. So what you're saying is that...
I need to turn my mic.
Go back to the other one.
The football one?
No, the other.
He's gonna get us on the technical, technical flag.
So operating expense is gonna be 17.96, no matter how many gallons it's gonna be, correct?
I calculated the price per 1,000 gallons, and then I multiplied that by 3.5 because you have 3,500 gallons.
Okay. I guess my real issue is that if you did that for 1,000 gallons, why not do the base and the usage for 1,000 gallons as well? 3,500 gallons, pretty much, for a long period of time, has been the estimate of the average person in the city of Villarica. Some people use more, primarily maybe Mural Lake because they have an irrigation system. Some of the other subdivisions with irrigation system would use a whole lot more. Some of the seniors or some of the non-seniors with two people in a house would use a lot less. So 3,500 gallons has been a number that has been used for 20, 25 years. The question for me, and I think for a lot of folks, is what does it cost to produce 1,000 gallons of water? And then what does it cost to put that 1,000 gallons in a pipe going to somebody's house? And the reason I say this is that for such a long period of time, we've been told as a council that $1.61, $1.65, $2.12, those kind of numbers have been thrown about. And we were, or I was, I can't speak for the rest of them, but I was with the understanding that that's what it truly costs to get that water from point A to point B, whether it was Carroll County or wherever, from Lake Fashion or the lakes into the water plant, into the pipes going out. And in reality, that's not the case. You know, we still gotta pay for electricity. We gotta pay for all the chemicals that go in. We gotta pay a lot of different things. So really, that $1.61 is not even close to what it costs the city to put 1,000 gallons of water in a line going to somebody's house.
How much will we pay in Carroll County for their water per 1,000?
It is, well, it's not 1,000. The number that's been quoted is by unit. And I met with Pete yesterday, and we calculate what that is per 1,000, and it's 2.16 per 1,000 is what we pay.
You're paying 2.16 a thousand?
But that, like Councilman Best is saying, that doesn't include all the other, the depreciation of the whole system, the personnel that it would take.
That's our direct payment is how much we pay them. If we get 1,000 gallons of water, we pay them $2.16.
Correct, just for the water, not including everything else. Councilman Best, the cost per 1,000 gallons on my calculation is $5.13. So that's the cost of producing it and getting it into the ground.
That's our water here in Villarica that we produce.
Correct. That's all these expenses that I'm including here without any additional that we may purchase.
1,000.
5.13 per 1,000.
Now, I may be off. Obviously, I did some number crunching separate from Sarah, actually. And in fact, this is a clear reality. This is sort of that jugular that get you. If I recall correctly, if we raised our rate today, today, 22%, we would be at break-even point. No one could sustain that kind of jump. That's the reality, and I'm not even suggesting it, and I don't want anyone to think. But, and then I also then projected out what I consider are, you know, she'd made reference to life support, but basically how far out until the system actually implodes with our current growth, which is, I believe, averaging a net of 24 new people per month. There is a, an algorithm I ran that says in 5.4 years, the system will implode.
On life support, solid waste or...?
On your enterprise funds. So 5.4 years, everything is projected to implode, meaning that you, and she'll get this in a moment, but you'll no longer be able to sustain because you won't have enough property tax revenue coming in to keep making ends meet, is how those calculations are done. So, so just wanted to put that out there.
Let me make sure I understand the numbers. Is 2.16 a thousand is what we're actually paying Carroll County? What is it, what's the rest of the cost before it gets to the household? What's the total? The total cost, 5.13, is that also for Carroll County water?
No, that's just for ours. For the Carroll County water, you would just be adding to that 5.13.
How much do we add to it?
The 2.16.
That's, oh, you add that to the 5.13?
Mm-hmm. Because right now, it's coming into our water treatment plant. So you still have the personnel to keep the plant going. You have the depreciation on the plant. You have the depreciation on the pipes that get the water to the houses. And again, the administrative costs that it takes to run the system.
So for us to produce our own 1,000 gallons of water with our water plant, now that we got it up and running again, it costs 5.13 total?
Correct.
No.
Nope.
No, that's a, the, so I hear no, I hear no, I hear yeah. Based on our calculations right now, today, that's our physical cost per unit to produce.
To supply it to the customer.
Correct.
That's our cost to produce. If you're buying water, you add to that.
That's a different story, yes.
So 5.13, if we just used our own water, that's what it would cost.
And see, we're limited on the amount of water we can produce because we're limited by the permit. So we are in a situation, wherever we exceed that permit, we immediately buy water. And I know the question's gonna come up. So it's cheaper to buy water from Carroll County than it is from WSA when we need to buy water? Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, on a bad day, last year, we were running, on average, about an extra half a million gallons on usage, but it fluctuates. So right now, we're buying, on an average, how much water from Carroll County?
Right now, we're averaging a million gallons a day.
A million gallons a day, million gallons a day.
We're buying a million a day from Carroll County? How much do we produce?
No, I'm sorry, that's what we're producing.
Okay, good, thank you. I was like, you know, I turned left for a reason because my face was a little in shock. So we're producing a million, our permit's for 1.5. We have an issue right now because we can't actually physically produce 1.5 million until we get the flow intake issues through our pipes.
Yeah, we think there's a restriction in the discharge line from town to fashion. We can currently pump 300,000 gallons, but that's 200,000 shot our permit allows us. So we can make up that deficit by finding that wherever that restriction is.
So we have three reservoirs, and we have one that is restricting us based on the infrastructure. So we can't move, and your city attorney knows this very well, that's an important issue because we have to be able to move water so that one particular reservoir doesn't get too empty. So right now, we are permitted for 1.5 million gallons. Right now, we have the capability because we're restricted by a pipe flow issue, obstruction issue. So a million gallons is what we're doing. We're buying the difference from Carroll County. Right now, on average, what are we buying from Carroll County?
3,400,000.
Okay, so we, on, you know, again, when we hit the height last year, I seem to recall it was about a half a million a day average. Staff is working with engineers and otherwise on this flow issue, which will allow us to get, I believe, 200,000 additional gallons, which will allow us to pull back on what we're buying from Carroll County. But it's no easy feat. It's not a matter of me putting Drano or Pete putting Drano in a pipe. It physically is an engineering feat of the pumps and the pipes, and he can explain much greater. To me, it's like just get that turtle out of the pipe. But that said, we need to be able to produce 1.5. But keep in mind, we're also, you know, in level-one drought situations, which is currently, is why we're trying to do as much promotion as we did. I made it clear earlier in the year that we were going aggressively. Don't think that I knew that the drought was coming, but I do read the Farmer-Salmon Act. But it's a reality that that part's in critical mass regardless.
Okay, so I understand that the city needs about 1.4 million a day to operate, if that's what you're saying. So we're producing a million, we're buying 3,400,000, so that's 1.4 million.
In the summer months, it's a little higher. Summer, yeah, sorry, Sarah. In the summer months, it goes a little higher because of all the irrigation.
Especially with a drought.
And we think that's gonna pull back. We hope it's gonna pull back.
Not my doing.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying you. I'm just saying that we're hoping that that's what happens. You know, I mean, even the lakes over at Fairfield Plantation, I mean, they're all down. It's, we're all down. But it's very critical for us, because of an agreement that we have with one of our reservoirs, that we monitor the overall water depth. So in order to, so that is one of the highest priorities right now is to be able to pump what we legally and are permitted to in order to resolve that issue. And hopefully, the public will help and...
Well, having winter come...
The issue comes to a point. We have three lakes that we pump from. We have three lakes that we pump from. The issue then becomes, can we pump? How long will it take for us to pump a million and a half gallons out of those three lakes before they're dry? The capacity of those lakes.
That's my question. That's a tough one.
Can I hold this just for a second? If we're going to have Pete talk quite a bit, could we have him on a mic so that whoever's tuning in doesn't miss all that he's saying? Because so far, we've heard it, but whoever's streaming or listening archive won't be able to hear what he says.
Come on.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, it's just...
Well, let's do this, let's do this, Pete. How about we finish Sarah's presentation, and then you guys go to Q and A and then address that, because I think it'll be helpful.
Sarah would.
Is that okay?
That too.
Is that fair?
That's fair, she'll get to sit down.
Okay. Yeah, moving on, similar comparison, but this is our sewer rate. Based on that same customer that had used thirty-five hundred gallons, because our sewer usage is based on the water usage, what they've taken out of the system, it's supposed to be going back into the sewer system.
He's eating his candy bar.
Good.
Yeah, I could.
But you're going to owe me twenty-four percent of it.
She'll get it one way or the other.
All right, so that, again, we have a base cost, which gives you the first thousand gallons, and that's twelve dollars for the resident and five dollars for the senior. And then we have a similar usage cost, which is the same for both. And then the operating expense here is thirty-two forty-six for each, based on the thirty-five hundred gallons. And you can see here, we have a loss on the residential side and the senior side. The residential side is seven dollars and seventy-one cents, and the senior side is fourteen dollars and seventy-one cents. And again, that operating expense is based on the system, so it's the wastewater plants, the depreciation, you know, the cost of the system there, the personnel there, the other half of the distribution collection, because we have the pipes in the ground to get the sewage away from the houses and back to our plant, and the depreciation on those, and again, the administrative costs that you would assume if you had like a Georgia Power or, you know, a standalone utility. And that's where those costs come in.
Wait a minute, the, there's only a seven-dollar difference between the senior and the residential on the base. Isn't that the amount the seniors using up that the others aren't? Is that seven seventy-one? I don't see where these numbers came from.
If you look at the base, there's a seven-dollar difference there from residential to senior.
That's their savings.
Mm-hmm. And then, we still have the usage cost, but the operating expense is still greater than both, so that's where we have a loss.
Operating costs is greater for residential than it is for senior?
It's the same cost. Our sewage cost is the same regardless of who is using it. So for thirty-five hundred gallons, that's our cost to the city.
Why is the operating cost less for a senior? They don't go to the bathroom as much?
It's not.
It's not go there.
The top half is what we bring in as revenue, so what we charge, the base fee for them, that's their discount. The senior discount is seven-dollar discount on the base, but the operating expense is the same regardless.
We don't, the only discount they get is in the base, right? It's not in, it's not in the...
The usage.
The usage.
Although, you're going to pay less if you lose, use less water.
Correct.
This is sewer.
It's got to go somewhere.
Well, yeah, but the sewer is based on...
The water usage.
So even when you're out there washing the RV, and none of it's going in the sewer, you're still paying for it.
Yeah, because we soft-treated. So really, what you have here is, you're operating at a loss regardless. So if you take that amount and the difference of the discount, add them two together, you get to fourteen seventy-one.
If you take fourteen seventy-one, subtract off the seven seventy-one, you get seven dollars, which is the difference on these two.
Yeah, it's the same way. You can take that same seven, just add it. So, yeah, you can do the math two ways, but yes, sir. So it has, it has nothing to do with how many times they flush the toilet.
I'm not too far away.
That's much better, thank you.
I'm sorry, I was chewing.
All right, this, because thirty-five hundred gallons has been used for the decades that Mr. Best referred to, I have brought you a different calculation as well, so you can see the difference, because it is different based on the usage. So a residential customer that uses six thousand gallons, our revenue, or our net income, you should say, on the water side, is a dollar oh four on that customer, so we make even less the more they use. In the sewer, we lose eighteen fifteen on that. I didn't calculate the senior, because typically, the seniors do use less than six thousand gallons. And then a commercial customer with a one-inch meter that uses thirty thousand gallons, we lose eleven seventy-two on them every month, and on the sewer, it's a hundred and ten thirty-six. So how does that add up? This is our net income or loss for the past four, or five audits, excuse me. You can see in 2012, the Water Sewer Fund did bring in a net income of a hundred and twenty thousand, which is probably due to transfers from the general fund, but then we have losses every year after that. And in the solid waste fund, we did have one income in, or one net income in 2013, which is thirteen thousand, but every other year, we've shown a loss. And 2015, you can see, the loss wasn't as great, and in 2014, and like David referenced earlier, we did, or I should say, he pulled back spending in 2015, so that kept us from having such a large loss in 2015.
I'm sorry, you probably said, what happened to the twelve-thirty, two thousand fourteen? What happened to that number? Broke even?
I'm sorry, where?
There's a missing number.
Oh, in solid waste? Yeah, they, I think there was an audit entry, because, well, I know what it was. There was a transfer to make it breakeven. There was a transfer from the general fund to make it whole.
Basically, there was a loss there, but there was an audit entry that took cash and made up the difference and netted it out as zero, sir. But, you know, that...
There's the missing "netted it out as zero."
So on your audited financial statement, it actually made it look like there wasn't a loss?
But there's still more to talk about. We have the debt service, so on top of covering the cash shortages, the general fund is also paying half of the debt service for the wastewater treatment plant, the thirty-four million-dollar bond. So half of it is paid by general fund, and the other half is paid by the water sewer fund. If you go to the next slide, we show you different buckets. So the general fund brings in property tax, local option sales tax, and other fees. That goes into the bucket of the general fund, but then we scrape off one-point-five million and send it over to the enterprise funds to cover the debt service and other cash shortages. So like David said, in five-point-four years, that, those enterprise funds will implode. They will no longer be able to sustain themselves.
We keep having reevaluations, we don't have to worry about it.
I wish that was an accurate statement, sir, but there's more, that is a good part to it. But keep in mind that your debt service every year is going to be going up and increasing, so your acceleration cost is faster than a reassessment, and, you know. And so, for instance, like, you get in three-point-two million of property tax this year. In 2016, you're going to basically scrape off one-point-five million before you can even sneeze and cash that check, and you have to send it immediately over to your enterprise funds. So, you know, so the factorization is reassessments are one thing, yes, mileage rates is another, fees are another, what you charge for the services. So there's, your rights are, but there's other things compounding that. So your acceleration alone, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah, when we looked at that, the bond payment, it escalates...
By 2020, we'll be paying over two-point-two million in debt service.
What are we paying now?
One-point-six this year.
And didn't we, didn't this year's budget have an eight-hundred thousand dollar transfer from the general fund over?
That's, yeah, that's the half of it.
Yeah, that was the half of it, just to make that part, plus then you transfer over the difference of that that gets you to the one-point-five million, and you're transferring to make ends meet on the actual funds themselves. So you're paying fifty percent of the debt, and then transferring additional funds to make ends meet on those funds. So that all totals up to about one-point-five million.
I'll have to go back and look at the budget, but I only saw eight-hundred thousand transferred out of the general fund.
Yeah, the cash isn't necessarily an expense to us, it's just covering the cash. The auditors move it over. The, you know, at the beginning, I showed you the operating cash balances at the, for the different funds, and for the water sewer fund, it was negative, it was over negative seven hundred thousand dollars. But you don't see that, because the auditors transfer the difference from the general fund to there to cover that.
Wait a minute, the auditors are transferring?
They don't transfer cash, it's just a book entry so that, because negative cash isn't really cash, it's a liability. They owe the general fund that money. So the auditors reclassify it, so it doesn't look like a negative cash balance, because it's not cash at that point.
As my father-in-law would say, it vapors. It's like equity in your home. Until you sell the home, you don't really have equity. But there's a whole bunch of people gave you loans on it. Well, that's really what's going on here. You have a fund that you're given a loan to, but, you know, again, I think that you're seeing the true transparency of your budgets and your funds, if you will, and it's hard to digest, but carry on.
And to your point about the property tax paying for it, if you go back to the beginning where it had that green star, the enterprise funds are defined as supposedly revenue-generating activity that provides enough funds to cover the debt service. So I understand we do have the capacity with our money from our property taxes, but these funds should stand alone. Okay, do you want to go to the next slide? This is back to that original example with the thirty-five hundred gallons for sewer. If the enterprise fund paid the full debt on the sewer side, this would be our loss. So I believe it was seven dollars and seventy-one cents before. In this case, we would now be losing sixteen oh one from the residential side in twenty-three oh one, if this fund paid the whole debt. Go to the next one. Back to our candy bar. This puts our sales price at sixty-one cents, so we would lose thirty-nine cents on every candy bar.
Only eight thirty-nine cents for it.
And on the football example, we would be losing thirteen to forty-one every month, if the sewer fund paid the whole debt. So what does this mean? These are the implications for the water sewer fund, because again, the general fund is healthy, and it looks good. This is the water sewer fund and the solid waste fund. What are the implications here? The first one is a possibly lower bond rating. The bond rating agencies look at the health of the entity, including the revenues and the reserves. So if we are having net losses and our reserves are decreasing, then they're going to take those things to, into account, and this could mean higher debt service in the future. Also, infrastructure. Again, if we don't have the reserves available to prepare for the future growth, I don't know how we will address that when the population starts growing, or keeps growing, and has been growing. Historically, splosh has been used for water sewer fund projects, but again, this is an enterprise fund, and it should have the revenue to sustain itself. And lastly, catastrophic event. We do not have enough reserves for three months of expense, much less any disaster, so that puts us at risk. Questions, or should I leave now?
You know, this is, this is not new, per se. The details of it, we started being aware probably well over a year ago of some of this. I just appreciate the way this was laid out. I like things in common language, and when we don't get all bureaucratic A, B, C, X, Y, Z language, so people can't understand it. Ms. Mayor, I know you chair the meetings, and if y'all feel this way, there's a consensus for this. This probably would take maybe ten minutes for her to do this presentation, when we don't do all the questions and stopping you and everything. Is it possible to have this presentation done at the meeting on Tuesday, so the people that are there?
She cannot make that meeting, so she won't be here, so they'll have to go back and watch the video or look at the document, or I can go through and read it, but Ms. Sarah has a conflict and is unable to be here.
It's just done such an...
But we could clone her.
...understandable way for the layperson. I, people have a right to understand this and know what's going on, and then they'll better understand the position we're in and what kind of decisions we have to make.
I mean, we could probably go to her presentation and like, cut it out of the video and like, make it a standalone, like YouTube video.
I just think it'd be real helpful for the citizens.
I agree, she did a commendable job on it.
Well, we have a link on this also, put on like, the happenings, where they could get like a...
Which, the video or the document?
Video.
I mean, yeah, we could carve it out, absolutely.
But even the pictures alone are clear enough without the video, just...
Yeah, that document's online now.
It's produced.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we still have questions.
Yeah.
Pete, you were supposed to follow her.
Now, with fairness, seriously, if there's someone in the audience that wants a candy bar, there are extras. The taxpayers did not pay for these, so get them, get them while they last. This is your payday.
They're two ninety-five a piece.
And I did try to find a hundred thousand grand bars, but I couldn't find them.
Gee, Danny, when I thought you were chewing, I'm thinking, is he chewing tobacco?
I told you, he opened up his candy bar. Y'all thought I was kidding.
It's tempting.
I gave them to her, and I said, oh, you know, I didn't think there might be someone on the council with a peanut allergy, so that was risky.
By the way, I'm going to the hospital and I'll spend your bill.
Your first paycheck, there you go.
Come on.
Come on down.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, she's...
Don't go too far, Sarah.
It's like enterprise funds for dummies. That's great.
My first question to you, Pete, would be, are the lakes drawing down, or are they staying up?
Is he going to do his bit?
It's not a presentation.
Asking these questions.
Just answer a question. The lakes were drawn out, are they?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yes, they are, but they've been ebbing and flowing, based on the weather pattern. So we have had, we've been blessed with some showers that have come through that give us a breather, if you will, for a few days, and kind of comes back and forth, and hopefully we'll get some good showers that'll sustain us and rebuild these supplies.
They don't get dangerously low, do they? I mean...
Well, I can tell you this, there've been a few times this year already that Lake Paradise, which is the smallest one, has not contributed anything to Lake Fashion, because it has not gone over the spillway. But we'll get a little shower up on the watershed, go up there the next day, and we see some flow coming back into the lake, which is a good thing. So it's back and forth, and I think we'll see that pattern going into the late fall and winter months. Lake Cowans, ever since we started pumping over there, we, I was over there last week, and it is definitely having an impact on that lake. The mouth of the lake tends to be affected sooner than the rest of the body of the lake. In other words, the part of the lake where the water's coming in opposite the dam. All of our impoundments are shallow, and out of Cowans, it's probably the most shallow of all three of them. I would say the average depth would be four to six feet deep. The saving grace there, is that lake is spring-influenced, and so we get a real benefit from that.
I don't think, David told me, but I've forgotten the answer to this, Spring Lake stays up pretty well, but we don't draw water out of it. Why didn't you tell me that was the case, David?
Those are the headwaters for the Dog River, and, and I forget what I told you. I can go, I know, I know I had to go and research it, because when you asked me, I was like, I don't recall, but then I went back. I'll look at it real back.
Because it doesn't drop during a drought, so it's a good...
Yeah, there's a specific reason why we're not pulling water out there right now. Oh, I know, now I remember. It was the cost to me, the infrastructure, there you go. Berlin knows the answer, because we had this conversation, because he asked after. So it's the cost of, they looked at actually the cost of getting that all the way to the water treatment plants, and the physical cost outweighed to justify a guy pulling that water out of it.
Even the two-million-dollar package plant, and to run the line straight into a line to the, to the...
The nearest line, even if you tapped on the nearest one, you...
Even if you did that, then it would have to go into one of the tanks, but that two million dollars is a lot of water. So, you know, that's where the issue comes in, does the amount of money it costs to get that to a point? And then there again, how much water are we actually going to look at taking out of that lake? I'm sure Douglas County would raise cane, because it is the headwaters of Dog River. They would raise cane about reducing that water and the flow over the dam into the Dog River.
At one time, it was the waterworks for the Villareca.
That's correct, but that, we didn't withdraw the amount of water that you're talking about for this. To me, that's the whole issue for this whole scenario, is the fact that the capacity of the lakes that we have now, if we're going to do three months for funds and have the ability to have that... funds and, and have the ability to have that to reserve, we ought to do the same thing with water. And we don't have the capacity in any of our lakes. Not your fault by no means. But it's been that way now for ten or twelve years. In fact, one year, we were ready to dredge Lake Paradise. Got the machinery put it on the side of the lake. And the next day started a, a rain episode that lasted seven days. The water rose almost nine foot out of the banks into the equipment. So we had to get the equipment out and it has never been thought of again. But, you know, the capacity of those places to me is the issue and all of it. You either raise the dam or you dredge. And, and because the dam, part of the dam is on private property, I think it'd be very difficult to do that. But it's one of the few places, and I've been several places around this world fishing, that's one of the few places that people actually own the property out into the lake.
Right.
And, and I've not, you know, you just don't see that at all. So, you know, you have to be careful of that. But the dredging on the upper end and of these other lakes could be the possibility. Now, you're still talking two million dollars to dredge. But you're also, I think Carrollton did, Carrollton did, uh, Lake Carroll and, and, and got away with some things down there and actually dropped that lake five to six foot, maybe even ten. And the water capacity that's available for those folks to bring their drinking water, uh, i- i- it doubled or tripled. I, I'd just like to see us come up with an idea of maybe a three-month period of, of water capacity in those lakes. Uh, you know, and, and the, you know, the bottom line of this whole scenario, folks, is close the water plant and buy it off in Carroll County. I mean, and nobody wants to do that. Because that means that if we do that, we have to start over. And with a new water plant, I'm sure, uh, not adding on, but a complete new water plant, uh, ten or twelve million dollars.
And can Carroll County supply our needs for the future? That's-
Certainly. They, that's not, not an issue with there because theirs got four-
They would love to. They're making money on theirs.
They got four or five lakes. Uh, and their Snake Creek is one. Uh, the lake at, um, Lake Seaton is another. Um, you know, that, there's, there's water at Lake Seaton that's about sixty foot deep, according to my depth finder. But I don't, I don't know the rest of it. But, and then there's fish that live in there too. So the, but they have the ability to do that. Now, is that something we need to do? No. We need to do ev, everything we can to keep the water source in the city of Villa Rica. But I think that looking at some of the things that are coming available to us, it may be more important to, if you will, think outside the box. And I, I know you're good at that. I'm not that good at all. I'm just listening to, to what people are talking about, about taking water out. I, I just don't think we can take a million and a half gallons of water out of these three lakes for an extended period of time. And I'm talking about two weeks, three weeks. I just don't think we can do that. But with the water coming back in that we think is coming, um, you know, it's like guys on Friday night playing poker. You know, I don't know what the other guy's got, but I'm gonna bet what I got. And, and what we've got right now is not a whole lot. So we need to kind of up the ante and see what we can come up with. Uh, I don't know the right answer. I'm just bringing up some questions.
I think s- s- some, uh, a lot of what you said, I think is spot on. Uh, unfortunately, when these were impounded, they were for soil erosion and for flood control. And they turned into water supplies. And so that's one reason they're, uh, shallow to start with. They still function with that control. So you get all the silt load that comes in. And so that reduces the yield, the depth, if you will, what you have in these impoundments. And that's aggravating the situation that we have. Um-
So is dredging the answer?
Well, there could be a combination. I, I understand your concern about raising the, the level of the dam. Uh, we do have, the state's told us we have ownership in those dams as far as responsibility. Uh, that could be an option. And it could be a combination of dredging and raising the dam. It could be twofold thing. Um, it's gonna be, okay, then again, i- if you take the approach, say with Fashion, and you dredge it, during that end, when that dredging is happening, you're gonna be buying all your water from the county. Because you're gonna have to de-water most of that lake to get that equipment in there.
We did that this year for nine months, so.
I know. And, and you see what the sting was, that we, the, the price tag associated with that. It was, it was expensive. But those are the, the measures you have to take. And none of them are easy to get to the other side to get where we need to be. Um, you know, you talked about Carroll County, uh, the, the Water Authority in particular. Uh, even though they developed their reservoir twenty, twenty-five years ago, they're rapidly approaching seventy-five, eighty percent capacity with where they're at right now. So they've been, uh, very proactive, been looking for another reservoir. And, uh, so in a situation like that, I think we need to look at all of our options. Uh, if we, it's really hard to forecast what we do with, with the existing plant in light of all this. So my first approach would be to do, uh, an assessment and approach the state and let them tell us, is there, number one, is there any more yield in the watershed that we're dealing with right now? If we did this or that, are they open to that? Would they give us more withdrawal? What would be the maximum amount of that withdrawal at our current site versus, while we're still doing that, I think we know with the growth projections, we're still gonna have to look at additional sources of some kind. So how do you, how do you stair-step into that future?
That's what we pay you big money for.
And I'm chipping away at it the best I can. It's a tough nut to crack.
I seem like I've passed. I remember we were gonna do a joint effort of a reservoir with Carroll County. Do you remember that?
Yeah, it was gonna be Snake Creek.
That went away, huh?
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any discussion about joining forces with the proposed new reservoir?
Not that I, there, there were some early on, but then it kind of fell apart. You talk about the one in Harrelson County?
No, the one that, uh, the Water Authority is, uh, thinking about.
The last one I remember was over at the Harrelson Carroll County line, the big one over there. They talked about.
I, I don't remember the location. It may be the one you're, you're describing.
But that was, gosh, several years ago. As many as seven or eight seemed like.
Well, they're, I mean, they've made application for a new reservoir. And they're, they're moving forward and trying to do that. I think they've just recently withdrawn it temporarily. But I think going forward, they'll probably move on that. And, uh, you know, should, should Villa Rica have an ownership or a stake in that? And that would be a question I would ask. And I would think that the answer to that might be yes.
Oh, I think so as well. I also think that they, that seemed like, it was just as we started to do the sewer plant, there was involvement with Carroll County, possibly them owning some of the capacity in the sewer plant. Uh, there's, say there's eighteen or nineteen subdivisions between here and Powhatan County at one oh one, that they were looking into at, at one time about having sewer lines there. And, you know, pumping it into, uh, the Villa Rica plant. So that is an option there as well, the water and sewer idea of, of maybe swapping.
Sure. I mean, in some cases, uh, rather than building a plant at that reservoir location, wherever that might be, you, you know, it's, it's not unheard of to have a raw water trunk line that comes to an existing facility that you have. And you can treat it with, with what you already have. Uh, uh, Gwinnett County, uh, Forsyth County have actually, back in, in years past with the drought that impacted them off the Lake, Lake Lanier, they have built large concrete circular tanks for raw water. Where, um, I know in Forsyth County, it's a two-million gallon tank.
Mm-hmm.
And Gwinnett's got two, I believe those are two ten-million gallon tanks. So they have, they'll pump it there, they'll hold it there and let it gravity feed into the plant for treatment, uh, rather than paying additional costs to try to treat it at a new location. So that's an, that could be an option.
Well, I, we looked at, probably ten years ago, at the end of South Cal Road in sixty-one, the, the hole in the ground, of possibly making that the same kind of scenario, um, of, of a, a pump storage facility and, and use that, the water runoff from, from all of that side of I twenty into that, uh, hole. And then, um, put a facility there to pump it across the, uh, interstate into our facilities and, and our water plant. Um, that just went by the wayside for some reason. I think cost prohibitive.
I'll give you one more scenario. Uh, there's a, uh, one of the first regional projects in the state was Bear Creek, and it's located in Jackson County. And they had four counties that bought into the development of this. But Athens Clark also was a player. And, and the only way that Athens Clark is involved with that is they have got a raw water line that's at the intake, like, like the, and the other four counties paid for the cost of the treatment plant that is right there at that reservoir. And they had treated that water and then divided up X percentage of this county, so on and so forth. Athens Clark's got its own little piece of the pipe, but they just pump it over to their existing plant, Clark County. So.
Seems to me this is all really good information. And I appreciate learning it because some of these things I did not know. But isn't the bottom line still, all those things cost money to do? And you need to have reserves in the enterprise fund to help pay for those things. Otherwise, our options are limited anyway.
Sure.
So we still gotta get back to doing something about the enterprise fund. But keep thinking out of the box because hopefully we'll get ourselves in shape so we can go after some of these options. If we can do something with another county or something like that, that's great.
And for the benefit of the council, I mean, staff is working on and will continue to do so on crunchy numbers, looking at, um, rates, um, and, and sort of a plan to, to get there, if you will. Um, but, uh, your, your comment's well taken. I mean, we're, we try to contain cost while at the same time, um, we, we also need to pay the bills.
Pay the bills and have something reserved. It's like when you need a bigger house. You can't just go buy one. You've got to put something in your account so that you can expand because your family's expanding. And our family is expanding here. It's just on a population level.
The, um, the reality is, is this city has become, uh, dependent on splosts. Uh, and without splosts, um, uh, y- you would not have survived, if you will, um, your downturn years. Um, your overall fund balance is going up, but, but you're basically losing on the back end. And, and you can only do that for so long. All right, Sarah, I think you're back up, aren't you?
Financial update, if you'd like. So again, I broke it down by fund now so that we can all be on the same page with where the cash and reserves are. So at the top, we have the general fund. And the total cash operating at the end of August was a little over five million. And our total unassigned fund balance, which is what we've been talking about, the reserve for the general fund is six point three million. And we have some major revenues. Give you a status update on those. And our lost property tax funds, forfeitures, and occupational tax. You can see the budget in the year-to-date and the percentage of budget that we've collected so far. And again, like we keep saying, property tax, we'll start receiving. So we'll start to see those numbers show up. Lost is only a fifty-five percent received this, so far this year, but we're a month in a year. So what we receive in January of twenty seventeen will actually be credited to twenty sixteen. And then the fund overall, you can see there, the revenue and the expense. You can see the budget compared to year-to-date and where we are. So in our expenditures in the general fund, we're only at fifty-five percent where we should be around sixty-seven percent. So doing pretty well.
Oh, you're saying that the police department needs to go out and collect more fines on you?
No.
Just checking.
There are governments that are paying their bills that way, and it's a problem.
They're not doing their fair share.
They are.
No, no.
People don't like their police department either, right?
Chief, you need to earn your paycheck.
They're paying the bills.
He's eating it right now.
You wanna get some of it back?
Get a paycheck out here.
The, um, this part of the revenue status so, so that, you know, you're mindful of it. Um, this is the clearest picture that we can give you that says, we pay out for all these services. And then eventually, that property tax money comes back to reimburse you. This is a much clearer picture of, of what, um, uh, the statements that I've made in the past, so.
So what he's referring to, as you can see, year-to-date, we've paid out six point three million in expenses, but we've only brought in four point two million in revenues because we're about to get a big chunk of it with the property tax. That's what we need when we said we needed a balance. We needed to, um, bring in the property tax to pay for what we've already spent. That's what we're talking about. Enterprise fund, water and sewer. Again, operating cash, you can see is a negative seven hundred and fifty-one thousand at the end of August. We do have some cash and, and investments there in that fund, a little over two million. And our outstanding debt, you can see, is thirty-three million. And then our unrestricted, the fund balance, the reserve is one point four million. The major revenue sales in that fund, you can see water and sewer. We have collected sixty-one percent of our water sales and fifty-seven percent of sewer. And, um, again, there is some at the beginning of twenty seventeen that, that'll be credited back to the current year. Overall, um, our revenue, we've brought in sixty-two percent. And we've expended sixty-nine percent. So considering all the expense we had with the purchase of water, I think that looks pretty good. Enterprise fund, solid waste. Our operating cash at the end of August was negative one hundred and ninety-three thousand. Our, our reserve, if you can call it that, is a negative one hundred and thirteen thousand. Um, our revenue status, you can see there, we've received fifty-eight percent of our revenue. And then our fund status below, like, we have expended slightly more than what we've brought in.
So what's your, uh, thoughts on why the, uh, operating expense for solid waste is, is, uh, one hundred and ninety-three thousand lost?
The cash?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we keep spending more than we're making.
Oh, but what, what's that cash going to?
Um, do you want me to address that easily?
The guy's going all over-
You, you, you allow folks to put anything out on the street that they want, and we pick it up no matter what. And every load that goes to that landfill is a cash register. And it says ka-ching. And so for every single truck that goes in and out, in and out, in and out, and that cash register, um, well, that door, drawer opens and closes faster than, than, um, I don't know what opens faster than that. I was gonna think of a cartoon of like Road Runner or Tweety Bird or something. But I can't come up with anything, so I'm at a loss. I'll move on.
I know we have to do something about that. And we, we've addressed it to a degree. Um, is that grapple truck, when we get our hands on that? Um, I know it cost us upfront. We have to pay for it. Supposedly, we're supposed to be able to operate that with less employees. Is that gonna save us any money?
Your, your, your huge cost in solid waste, yes, it's going to save you some. But your huge cost is your tipping fees. I mean, even at the municipal rate. I mean, you're paying for every truck that goes in, goes out.
Well, I never thought we should move people anyway. I don't, I don't know why we have to pick up everything. But I guess it, maybe it keeps people from doing illegal dumping. I don't know.
I, I had a, a, um, a listening session today with Public Works. And one of the things that came up was the sheer volume of stuff that, you know, I mean, some, some of the complaints are some of these bags of yard waste they're putting out there is like two hundred and forty pounds. Grapple truck, hey, it's gonna be great. But that two hundred and forty pounds, just for, for a bag of yard waste? Boom. You know, we're having to pay to get rid of it.
That should be recycled. That shouldn't be going to the dump anyway.
Which dump? We have a, a, a inert landfill with Douglas County just for that. And they mulch things and things of that nature. So-
I know, we mulch-
But we still have to pay to get rid of it.
We're mulching all the limbs up. Why can't we throw that in with our limbs?
But where are we dumping it?
Well, I don't know. I hope we're gonna be pu, dumping it on park trails.
See, we are legally, um, required. We are taking it to the landfill.
Don't we have to mulch every- Don't we have to mulch every garden bed in the city that belongs to us?
And look at beautiful sixty-one and seventy-eight. That is all free mulch.
Are we using that as much as possible? Somebody, and I'm...
We use it whenever we can. Trails, everything. We use it.
Do we have a place, because I've heard this is effective in some cities, do we have a place where we could have free mulch for people, where they could even come and pick it up? Maybe we wouldn't have to dump as much. I'll just leave that there just as a possibility.
You mentioned it, and I know that I passed that on to staff and said, "If you can find some place in the city," you know, nobody likes the place that keeps coming up on the radar. Because we actually don't have a lot of places that you can just go, you know, that's away because that stuff smells.
Okay, well, let's just keep...
But we continue to look.
Wings is a possibility.
But folks, do call us, and we deliver it to your house. We do. We actually do. We, you know, now, now the calls that we get that says, "By the way, can you deliver it here and here?" We don't go, it's like, we can come and we can dump it. We can't make four or five loads.
The only reason I don't have is because I can't wheelbarrow it all in my backyard. Quick question on that general fund, unassigned fund balance. Is that our savings account?
That's our reserve that we were talking about earlier. So in the general fund, three months of operating expense is about three million, so everything above that, that's room for investment and future growth.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to clarify. Remember the ten million floated out? We have ten million, we have ten million. We kept hearing, "We have ten million."
No water.
Okay, that's what we're talking about?
That's why they didn't get it.
That fund, right?
If it was referred to in a whole, this doesn't include any splosts funds that we have, they have reserves as well that have splosts that hasn't been spent from prior s, this is just the general fund which would have built up from property tax, loss, and other fees.
So how does that relate to the ten million that's been talked about for years?
In fact, let me rephrase the question if I may. Tell her exactly how much cash we have that they could actually spend that's not attributed to anything.
Right. It's the walking around.
Yes.
I knew the ten million wasn't walking around money.
For the whole city?
That they could tap, no, if, you know, if they needed to rob Peter to PayPal and all that stuff to go out there and grab cash from anywhere that's not restricted, how much could they grab?
I would say eight million. But that's, well, but that includes splosts, which is restricted to splosts-type projects. So that six point three million, that's your general fund. That's, that wouldn't be tied to anything specific.
Has that amount stayed consistent about over the last five years?
It's like it's growing.
The slide that I showed with the bars, it's grown, I can't remember where it was, like, over the past four or five audits, it's grown to the six and a half million.
It's in this presentation.
Six and a half walking around money?
Correct.
Not the other that has to be, splosts has to be somewhere else? Okay.
There is no ten million figure.
And this...
It's never been ten million.
That, that three-month you have to have for different, that's not in here?
That's in there. That's...
That is in there.
Yeah. That's if we have an emergency or if we want to invest in something, that's that.
Okay.
Yeah. I guess, I guess if we went to Jim Thorpe at the AJC where it's like truth, half-truth, partially-truth, you know, pants on fire, all this stuff, could I look at and say, "Yeah, we have ten million," but you have restricted funds that, you know, are for specific purposes that you just can't go out and spend willy-nilly?
Right.
I remember that even when we discussed it last year. I just didn't know how this amount related to that.
No, it's a great question.
Yeah, I mean, our equity is greater than six point three million, but it's restricted. We have equity that's related to our capital assets. Well, that's tied up in a building. We can't go out and spend it.
Right.
It looks like from this plot you gave us, it's gone up...
The fund balance reserves page.
Yeah, the reserves, fund balance reserves, gone up a million across a two-year period. And we're still transferring fund, money out of there to pay for the water sewer.
Correct.
It's still growing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the general fund has been growing. Any other questions? Are you tired of hearing my voice? I said, "Are you tired of hearing my voice?"
What?
Stay by the train.
Thank you, Sarah, for that. As we go to B-1 and its alcoholic beverages.
Great job, Sarah. I know you put a lot of work into that. All right, B-1 is alcoholic beverages. Our city attorney, let's see, this, originally, the game plan was put this on our September, I think it was our September, and quite frankly, I forgot about it. But, so our city attorney has created an ordinance for a complete update of the alcoholic beverages, basically taking all the changes that have come for it. So in the packet, the first thing you have is a red line version, and then in the back part, there is all of those red lines incorporated as a final document. I did pass on some comments to our city attorney, so I'll allow him at this point to address any comments he has about the ordinance. There may or may not be a tweak between now and next week on Tuesday, and if so, we'll let you know, but...
I did get in a few comments from Mr. Coors back there, some of which were very pertinent. I may try and update it. They're fairly minor changes. There are not any big changes to it, but I may try and tweak it just a little bit. But basically, this will be the format that it will be in.
For Tuesday?
I'm going to try and do it for Tuesday, yes.
Questions?
How many tweaks we got?
Probably less than seven.
Less than seven? I'm sorry.
Less than seven, yes, I think.
Yes.
And, and in all honesty, they are ones that could come back next month also. The ordinance is in a format that it could be passed now. But again, I'm going to see if I can incorporate those in before Tuesday. And we'd probably just send it to you in a different, a blue line version to save you those.
Blue line.
What's the difference in measuring from door to door and from property land to property land with alcohol? I can't remember what it is.
Well, I mean, it's a different measurement. You'll get different results depending upon how you do it. Generally, we try and follow the state, state recommendation, which is just the normal path of travel.
Is it consumption on property versus retail sale? Is that what it is?
No, it's for both. There's a difference in the distance for the sale of liquor as opposed to beer and wine.
That's what it is. That's what it is.
One of them is a six-hundred-foot distance, the other is three-hundred feet.
And it's still in there that if the school, church, the other establishments are there first, no, if the alcohol is there first, then it...
Yes, if the establishment is there first and the church moves in next door, then the establishment does not have to stop selling. They don't lose their license if somebody moves in next door to them.
Thank you.
It seems like most of the changes I saw were related to allowing for the wine and beer boutique. Instead of employee, manager was replaced in a lot of cases.
Right.
I've noticed they have to fill out some kind of form, whoever that licensee is going to be, that I've read this.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if they do what people do when they update their iPhone and everything else. Do you agree with these terms? Well, sure, I agree to those terms. Just that we might want to make sure, there's a few things they're very clear on. I know whoever's sitting in that chair always makes sure they understand that they may, a sting operation may occur. The other thing that's been a problem at one of our locations that I saw was made very clear in there that they have a certain amount of time to notify us if the person holding the license isn't there anymore. Just, and this, I'll just throw this out and be done, is that maybe that can be specifically pointed out for those people who maybe say they read the whole ordinance, but they didn't, that we want to know that they see that part.
Some of the problems that we've had can be addressed just by the forms that we use. We can create forms that people have to fill out where they sign that they have read the entire ordinance. You know, I'm not familiar with exactly what forms we are using, but some of our problems we can attempt to address in just the forms that we have people to fill out when they're applying to get their license. This also does...
They take the copy of all of this when they, when they, when they get the license, don't they?
They do.
So it's basically up to them to read what they, what they zip on the line for.
My understanding is that the form that they sign states that I've read the alcohol beverage license ordinance and that we'll comply with it.
The one we have does say that. I mean, the one I had a sample of in here does say that, but it seemed that we were more upset than they were upset when their licensee was not there and we found out the licensee wasn't there.
Right.
It bothered us more than it bothered them.
The other big change which had been asked for is it does change the time for sale, and that is incorporated into this ordinance, that we've extended the time on Saturday nights beyond what it was.
Right, yeah. We should know that one, right? Thank you. Thank you, David.
Okay. Move on to item two.
Item two is a alcoholic license. This is an application for a pouring beer and wine license under the limited pouring license restaurant provision on behalf of a not-for-profit corporation. This is Autumn Hills doing business as Luther's at nine oh one South Carol Road, Suite C. This will require a public hearing that will be held at your meeting on Tuesday, and at that time, the applicant will be required to be here. Other than that, all of the paperwork is submitted, and the background check has cleared city restrictions.
All right, item C is public works. Mr. Pete, you want to talk too, so have you done all your talk?
Well, I have to ask Mr. Milliron.
We tag-team because some of these things were in the works well before Pete came to work here. For instance, the GDOT maintenance actually goes back to, I guess, last July that we started. In this case, the council previously agreed on a agreement between the city and District Six of GDOT, which now reimburses the city on a per-center-line mile basis for right-of-way maintenance that the city's already doing, specifically, you know, litter control, mowing, et cetera. This is the same agreement, but because it is an agreement, it has to come before the council. But now, this is an agreement for the Douglas County side, which is a different district. This is District Seven. So once we negotiated Carroll County, we immediately approached District Seven and said, "Okay, we've got this in place on District Six. We would now like it on District Seven." So if the council approves this on Tuesday, we'll have a citywide agreement and be reimbursed for, I believe it's two thousand dollars per center-line mile on annual basis.
How much is that amount total?
I did some math, sir. It was, our center-line mile is two point oh six miles on the Douglas County side, so it's four thousand and some change, sir. About forty-six hundred.
We're taking care of it anyway. In this case, they will pay us for taking care of their right-of-way.
Correct. In fact, I was out yesterday. Yesterday, I actually photographed some of the workers out on sixty-one doing the work because we have to send them a report along with our invoice. So this is simply, as I call it, found money, if you will. We were already doing the work, and so it's only rightfully that we get paid for it.
You say this is only for Douglas County?
This is, this is, so we're in two State Department of Transportation districts. So on the Carroll County side, it's District Six, and this council's already previously approved and entered that agreement. In fact, the executed copy just happened to have shown up today.
How much are we getting from them?
That's over, I think, like twenty thousand, some change, because...
How many hours from now?
Same amount. They're identical contracts, sir.
Okay.
It's just that the, the center mileage is different.
All right.
Yeah, one didn't give us more than the other. We negotiated out the same amount, and I assure you, what they offered, we initially did not accept their offer. We actually negotiated a higher rate, so this is what you're getting.
All right, item two, surplus.
There it is.
That's item two.
We're requesting the surplus, surplus of vehicle is fitted for K-9 unit, and the sale would, of course, be limited to law enforcement.
The council had previously approved a purchase of Ford Explorers. The first Explorer is going to the K-9 officer. It's already been outfitted, and I'm no expert, but what I'm being told is that if you sell a K-9 unit already fitted out to another law enforcement, you'll actually get more than if you just stripped it down and put this car out on the street, and you'd be lucky to get sixteen hundred dollars for it. So I'm being told by, by the chief that they really want to sell this as a K-9 car, and whatever government buys it will pay us a lot more than just a, you know, stripped-down police car.
Are we supposed to have something on this?
Yeah, because I don't have anything here.
Oh, okay.
In the thing, it said that there was no, you know, although there, there is a page that I created just to put on the internet, just to, you know, show, but that's, other than the photo, that's identical to what you should have. Yeah, I think that's identical to what you have in your packet. It's just basically you have to declare that vehicle surplus, so...
You mean, it's identical to what we don't have in our packet?
Pardon me?
Identical to what we don't have in our packet.
No, no, no. It's C two. Exactly what you have here is exactly what it says there, except they have a photo.
What's on the agenda?
Yes, what's on the agenda.
Got it.
There's nothing in the packet.
That's correct. And it says in your thing that there's no supporting documents. In fact, this says no supporting documents. All it is, is you're taking a vehicle number five six eight six, and you would be declaring that vehicle surplus. So I gave you a photo of the car and the cute dog. And, okay, the handsome officer.
All right. It's got ninety... Wait a minute, it's got ninety thousand miles. Is that normally when we surplus one?
You'll have to ask the chief. I don't know. Why are we getting rid of this car? Because...
This is a chief's car, chief's car, right?
Well, I offered this to any of the captains, and they said there's fleas.
Well, like Mr. Milliron said, we are getting the new car. It is already in service, so we're getting rid of this car. It's hard to pass down a K-9 car for obvious reasons, for any other purpose than K-9, because we've done that before, and it, the car smells like dog, really bad like dog, and it's not something that anybody really wants to drive. The mileage is a little lower than we usually get rid of. We usually get rid of them at a hundred thousand or a little bit more as per our agreement. But because we did already get this car in, we're going to surplus this car as a complete package car because it's going to bring in more money for us.
Okay.
Now, as an alternative, I guess we could, you know, designate this as like a city council car, or maybe like designate it for the mayor's use?
Trip to Savannah, whatever you think.
Yeah.
I would never do that, Ms. Mayor.
We'll vote on that Tuesday night.
Because if it gets too hot, we can hit, hit a button and like one of the councils can just jump out, maybe?
We'll vote on that Tuesday night.
Moving on.
Just moving right along.
I'm just saying, you know, hey!
Say staff, not him. How about that?
Make it the city manager's car.
Item three.
Okay, this is important because I will put, say this up front. All right, so the LMIG little printout that's in here, I made a typo last night on my figures, so, so bring, bring, bring the amount up. So, bring the amount up that's got the line items. Which one? No, no, that's the roadless. This one has, you know, it's got, nope. Nope, keep going. It's not it. There you go. All right, all right. See the bottom right number that says 83844? I forgot to factor in the 30% match when I did my calculation. So, what you have in your packet says 83844, but the real amount is 109938. So, it's very, very important.
That's C3. I don't have a C3 at all, either a tab or a copy of that. I do. It's laying separately somewhere.
It was given out before.
You were at the train. You were at the railroad.
Okay. Because I saw it in email. I saw something in email.
Yeah, is it up there? You got it?
It was laying at your position. I had one.
No, I had this.
Did you trade your candy bar for it?
I had this, I had this, and I had all the financial. Okay, I'll look on this if I can just get a copy.
Do you have something with two tabs on it?
Pardon?
Two tabs, tab three and tab four? What's that back there?
I can look on this if I can just get it later. That'll be okay. I'll just look on here.
Well, make Micklin give you his copy. Right now.
Same thing as that.
Okay, all right. All right, so.
I did.
I stole it through trash.
I did. I stole it.
Somebody stole it.
It was caught on camera. All right, you want to lead in or you want me to lead in on this? Your choice. Okay. All right, so Pete and his staff, as you may recall, earlier this year went out and did an asphalt assessment and also made staff recommendations and brought them to you. And this council had approved a list of roads as a priority list with paving, and then additionally, on a second sheet, had staff recommendations for subdivisions based on priorities. As you recall, the 2015 LMIG monies, although budgeted in your budget, will not be fully recognized because the city initially did not apply for 2015 LMIG. So, what was budgeted when we set the budget at that time, we weren't aware that those funds just weren't ever going to come in. So, thanks to our GDOT board member, went to bat for the state, we had multiple meetings. At the end of the day, instead of 161928, we're going to, with our match, have 113075. So, know that in our budget, we have a different pot of money that's reality versus what it is shown in your budget, meaning we have less available. So, we went out to a competitive bid. The bid opening was earlier this week. There were three companies that were responsive, H-E-H Paving, which is actually a minority-owned company and firm. You have Baldwin Paving Company, and then you have CW Matthews. The low bidder and responsive bidder was H-E-H Paving at 46951750 when everything is said and done. Now, at the time of the bid opening, H-E-H Paving had, I believe, two documents that were not included in their bid document. It was noted that they did not have those. However, in our RFP, we had stated that the city could waive any informalities, et cetera. Those two documents were submitted later in that day. One of them had to do with a, I believe, a notice to intent to bid from like, it was a form that says, "Yes, I back this bid. We'll do the work." The other was a copy of their insurance document. So, it had nothing to do with the amounts, the money, or anything like that. When you look at the difference between this, it's a very significant difference between them and the next highest bidder. So, from an administrative standpoint, I'm letting you know that, you know, if you approve the low bidder, it's with the recommendation that we basically waive those two formalities of documents which we now have, and the overall recommendation is to move forward with H-E-H Paving. The paving would accomplish everything that is on your priority list and with a caveat. You have to be able to supplement what's in the budget by something to accomplish that because you don't have in your budget, you had put in 323558 based on staff recommendation, and that's because it's, all we did was take your LMIG and add the 30%. Keep in mind, you're down a little because the state only funded you 70% on the 2015 LMIG. However, you have money in your roads bucket from your 2008 SPOST, and so you're already receiving 2015 SPOST, so at some point, you've got to close out your 2008 SPOST. So, what I'm recommending is in order to get the paving done, that you go ahead and allocate that $304,750 that's in your 2008 SPOST to your revised budget numbers, which are shown on the screen here. And at the end of the day, you cover everything on your priority list plus any potential change orders, and that should leave roughly about 110,000, give or take. And that would allow us then, whatever's left over, to go into Charleston Place and make that your priority subdivision and try to get it done. If there's anything left over, it just rolls over to your next budget year, and we'll make a recommendation to supplement your 2017 so that you can continue paving. If you approve all this, there is some caveat, and I want to be very, very transparent with this. When we did this budget, we had talked also during the SPOST bucket. It would make sense that if the November 8th SPOST gets passed, that we prioritize the Douglas projects with the SPOST dollars in 2017. There's a mechanism to do that if it gets passed. So, timetable-wise, if, in my recommendation, it is, if you approve this, basically, I would have them work, the Carroll County side, moving towards Douglas County because there's going to be, you know, October 4th, and there's going to be some time in between to get the contract drawn up, approved by the city attorney, approved, and then get them mobilized on the ground because they have to have all this wrapped up by December 31st. So, if I have them starting on the Carroll County side, moving towards Douglas County, then the November 8th SPOST comes up. If that vote is affirmative, then I immediately turn around and work with the city attorney, and I come to the council at its December meeting with a resolution that would allow you, starting January 1, to basically take a loan against the anticipated revenues of your Douglas County SPOST. And that allows this paving company to continue to move forward and then keep moving on into Douglas County side of Villareca and get the work done. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, but I do want to tell you and be frank with you that that's, the staff recommendation is, I want to be able to move that way because it will extend your overall money. Your SPOST money that's on here, that 304,000 that you put on the table, has to be used on the Carroll County side. You don't have a choice there. So, that is why I'm doing it. And then if that vote is great, awesome. We do that resolution in December, and come January 1, we can continue to move right on down the priority list that's on the Douglas SPOST list and then be able to get those projects done as well. That then allows you some flexibility of having potential, some additional money in your 2017 budget for roads and sidewalk paving. And you have a lot. You have South Carroll, you have Rockmark, and go on and on. And we're not even talking sidewalks yet. You have some infrastructure needs. So, that said, questions? Yes.
Are you talking about Douglas County side borrowing from the Carroll County SPOST?
No, no. What you do is.
They still have to pass theirs in November.
Yes.
So, somehow include that in the answer too, because if they don't pass it, then that changes.
Yeah, and what we have to do is we have to make sure that the Carroll County SPOST is used on Carroll County side, which means that what you have budgeted on LMIG just simply gets used on the Douglas County side. When a SPOST is passed as a referendum, then it is basically effective January 1, but they cannot start collections, correct me if I'm wrong, David, until like April 1st? Which means that then it will be, you know, several months beyond that before you'll see money come back. So, under Georgia law, you have the right to pass a resolution that says, "If we spend any money on our approved budget list before the monies come in, when those monies come in, we can reimburse ourselves for what we extended." So, basically, I would take out a fund balance alone with your approval and get those projects moving, and then as the SPOST money comes in, you would repay your fund balance.
And by then, we'll know what their vote was over on the Douglas County.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have to carefully move forward with this regardless because I'm asking you to commingle SPOST money on this project. So, that's why regardless, I'm going to start on the Carroll County side and march towards Douglas County. Because I have to watch the pennies to make sure that that 304,000 is expended over there first.
So, where do you start? Top of the list and working right there?
Normally, I would, except that number one is in Douglas County.
I'm talking about the non-yellow stuff.
Oh, the non-yellow. Basically, because what I'm proposing here will take care of all 18 on the list, I basically will go back with Public Works, will lay out a game plan and sort of rearrange because what you don't want with the paving company is they don't want to have to keep moving their equipment all over the place. They want to be able to systematically move towards their endgame.
Two of these are Carroll and Douglas.
Yeah, so the list, the list itself as to, I mean, we want to be strategic so that, you know, systematically, we're going the shortest distance because it just increases their cost. So, we actually will sit down with them and work out that list with our Public Works staff and the vendor.
You have a diagram of it where you efficiently work away from the project.
Yep, because our goal is to keep the costs down and stretch those paving dollars. And for what it's worth, you know, I did check with an individual in the audience to find out, you know, what they knew about this company. We also had our engineering firm, who's doing the project management, also vet them and check them out. So, they check out very favorably.
This firm is H-E-H?
Yes, sir.
Yet they didn't comply with all the stuff they're supposed to do the bid?
There was two documents that they didn't have in there, but they're immaterial documents. The one.
He already told us what they were.
The one was a, basically, their certificate of insurance, as I recall. The other was a transmittal from their management that says, you know, "This is our official bid." They were notified that at the bid opening. I think we had those documents probably within two hours of that. And no one, no one at the table raised an objection, by the way, from the other bidders. It was all very transparent. But they also know, and I explained to them, this has happened once before. If you recall, last year, when we were looking at the stormwater stream samples, and there was a question raised by, at that time, the Ward 4 council member that, you know, there's one piece of document. You're going to toss them out, and I reminded, you know, the council that you are not required, when you state that you can waive, you know, minor inconsistencies, and that's what it is. It's not like they submitted something and had no prices in it. They met everything else. They even had the bid bond in there. All they had was two, you know, basic pieces of paperwork that were missing. And at the end of the day, the decision's the council. So, you do the math between the low bidder and the next one, you know, is that worth it to you to say, "Nope, they didn't have those two?" And again, it's your call.
Okay. Item number four, Norfolk Southern.
Okay, all right. Pete's that down because Charlie actually attended this meeting with Chris Pike and myself. So, Chris, you may want to come close should you want to have any input here since it's all downtown. Now that I'm putting you on the spot. And then Charlie, I think, is in Florida on the beach getting a suntan, as I understand.
Right.
Yeah, all right. So, the council is aware that earlier in the year, we had gotten word from Norfolk Southern that they were doing some clearcutting. They prioritized the track between Atlanta westward because Amtrak also goes on this. They call, they refer to it as an envelope because if you were to have an envelope and turn it around, it sort of looks like this sort of V going out. They had met with us after we made some immediate phone calls because initially, we didn't get like an official notification. We just heard from the grapevine that they were headed this way and they were clearcutting. So, we proactively reached out to Norfolk Southern, and subsequently, they had a meeting with us. When I say us, it's myself, it was Chris Pike and Charlie Davis. And we discussed our downtown corridor because whenever anyone talks about clearcutting, you know, a basically a 500-foot swath on both sides of a rail grade crossing, knowing that the city, you know, has invested a lot of tax dollar money in a beautiful park downtown, you can imagine that it causes a lot of angst and blood pressure. My summation of it is that they were very nice and very friendly, as they always are, but really, they gave us three clearcut options, and they won in answer pretty quickly. On your screen, you see the railroad crossings that pass through our downtown area. Stone Street, which is over here by Alar tree, no impact, no clearing necessary. South Carroll, there's a rose bush on the north side of the track. We'll have to replant that. And you see that facing west will have to be trimmed back or relocated. And again, you see envelope. Envelope has been flagged on the ground for visualization.
We're supposed to have that.
This, which one? Yeah? Yeah, you have a tab, tab number four?
Yeah, I do, because he doesn't have that. He has an email.
I don't have it, but I read it on the email.
No, I didn't have that.
And it's on the screen, but I'll need a copy of that, too.
All right. All right, so at the end of the day, anything taller than a foot, anything taller than a foot, they want clearcut. South Carroll, yeah. South Carroll, yeah, no big deal on the rose bush. Chief Street.
I've got this one, I don't have the ones on screen. This is not saying it was on screen. Same button. I'm seeing Stone Street. Just don't look like that to me. We don't have that. No, that's what I was asking. We're missing that one.
It's not in my packet either. All right, so scroll down, because I'm going to have to read it off, please. No, 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 just, just, just-
Go back to where I was?
Yes.
Where the three options are?
No, no, where the streets. All right, Chief Street is, is our biggest issue headed to Jones Street. Chief Street, basically, they've said that when a train comes, everything along that corridor into our train park, and then going back towards Jones Street, has to be clear cut. For instance, you notice all the nice little crepe myrtles and everything that's along that. All of that's their right of way on the north side of the track. And then, of course, Jones Street's a minimal impact, there's some clearing of vegetation, and then trees on both sides of the track. Those are those big, huge, beautiful trees on both sides of that track. Those will all be clear cut. The Norfolk Southern has given the option to the city, we can go in and do all the clear cutting ourselves, they've given us that option, or they can do it, or we can keep the bulk of all this as is, but we have to close Chief Street rail grade crossing. And they'll pay us as a city to do it, but you're, we're sort of over a barrel. You, 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 you know, at the end of the day, it's like, how valuable is that, you know, train park downtown that you, you know? And, and I hesitate to say, but they did remind us that our agreement with them for use of that park has a 30-day out. So, you know, we can't really, offense David, lawyer up, you know?
We could for 30 days.
Yeah, we could for 30 days, we could lawyer up big time. But all they have to do then is say, well, fine, you know, your contract's null and void. So this council really has to then go back to, well, Chief Street, you know, is, is a cut through. To me, it's a concern because of public safety of being able to get our patrol cars over if trains are blocking, you know? South Carroll, you know, so you always look at response times, you know, they have Jones Street, Chief Street, and South Carroll, so, you know, or they've got to go out the back way, go all the way to fly over and get over. So as long as the chief has his deployment of his cars on both sides of the railroad at all times, we're good. But, you know, you're booking info, or you have a big issue, bless you, you know, that's always a concern. So, public safety's one issue, but you have a decision to make.
We have a lot of very close crossings. I mean, I started getting asked, why don't you close Jones? I mean, we have people that live in the city that wish we'd close that one.
That's the one that I think, if you're going to close, would have been the optimal, but the reality is, they'll pony up and pay you to close both of them. They'll, they'll pay you to close every one of them, you know? Now, if only they'd give us a tunnel and, you know, then I'd trade.
$50,000 per person closing.
They are offering for Chief Street, $50,000 plus 7,500 from state money, plus they'll send their folks out, landscape the crossing area.
That's the one that's always getting hung on.
Used to get hung on, sir.
Used to?
Well, I mean, last time we had a truck hung up, I mean, when's the last time we had a truck hung up physically?
Three weeks ago.
I was thinking it wasn't that long.
But, but overall, I mean, we're not really having-
17 in six months.
You're close, right?
Where'd 17 come from?
I think it's more than 15 or 16.
This year, since we made those changes?
We did all that stuff and-
No, not, definitely not.
No, I don't think so.
No, not this year.
I get notified, you know? I mean, I hear it from the public, if there's a truck out there, I know it.
There was some this year.
Oh, yeah? Yeah, I, I, I think I'm aware of three, maybe four this year. But actually on, on the railroad, like actually, you know, stuck up on there? I mean-
You missed the ones where the tra, the trailer would come off the tractor and roll down into a business, and you missed all those.
Well, I would have liked to have been here for the ice cream one, but I was.
There too.
Who was it? Was it? What was that accident a couple of weeks ago? Was it like, it was a beer truck and something else? It was like the, it was like a Friday night baseball, football.
They have to give away the beer, they could get the weight off the truck.
There was something. I, I just laughed about the combination of the two trucks. Does anybody, anybody remember what it is? It was a funny combination. It's a beer and something, it's like beer and peanuts or something.
So if we want to keep our train park?
Yes.
We can't.
You can, but you got to close Chief Street.
Yes, that's the, but we can't and have the crossing, so.
You can't have your cake and eat it too.
We, you know, train parks won't be green every day.
Yeah, and if we ever did that thing on the Renaissance where we might even have a train watching deck thing, would that also be impacted by this sort of thing?
Oh, yeah.
If, if they, if they pull their leash, you're dead in the water.
Is that with, that's within that same corridor, isn't it?
Yep.
Well-
It's in there right away.
What you don't understand is the railroad owns from the front door here to the-
All the way to the rest of the ones.
And it goes all the way down to Jones Street, and all the way up to the crossing in front of Olive Tree.
Well, they don't take that house on Jones Street. I mean, we've got houses within that zone. Apparently, they don't take the houses, but they're on there right of way, right?
Great. So if we don't close Chief Street, what happens? They come along and put all our park down?
So is that in that corridor? It would be, right?
In, in, in your packet, okay, so, I'm sorry that this is sideways, but it, it's in your packet. So, all right, they have a right of way of 50 feet on both sides, except when it gets down here, it's even larger, because it's a double track. So what they're saying is that 300 feet from the crossing in either direction, they are going to cut back 50 feet on either side. And then, as they get 300 feet out, for the next 200 feet, they're going to envelope into 27 feet. So if you look at any of our grade crossings and imagine 500 feet out on either side?
500 or 300?
500 total, because you're 300 and 200, but, but, but they're different widths. So think, think, sir, of Chief Street going out 300 feet, and then another 200 feet. The difference between the 300 feet, if you scroll down, says that they're going to reclaim 50 feet on both sides of the right of way. As the envelope narrows on that 200 feet portion, the right of way, they're going to narrow to 27 feet. So if you're going from Chief Street this way to, towards us, basically, once you're 300 feet this side Chief Street, then they start to narrow the right of way, so they're not cutting their swath back. If you go above this, back to these two photos, Lisa? This is an example of the clear cutting swath. Basically, on a 300 feet of both sides, they're going to claim everything, 50 feet of both sides, and then as it narrows, they'll do a 27 feet. So that doesn't leave much of your railroad park, folks.
No, we have three crossings right there.
And as long as you bring all the vegetation, fences, everything out there down to no law, to all, you can have a miniature railroad park. Everything's just got to be miniature. It can't be, anything can't be higher than a foot. I don't think that's what you and the community want. That's not what I would want. I mean, you, you, you've got a whole master plan for downtown that's about to have the carpet pulled under, so like I said, they've got you over a barrel.
DDA would be real upset, too.
Lose our park.
They did that park.
Yes, sir. That's, 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 that, I mean, Chris, if you think that discussion was any different, let me know.
That's pretty much how it went.
Did, did they give us a date by which they, they need the decision?
Oh, yeah, when I accidentally, here's, here's how this all went down. I was gassing up my car at a unnamed gas station in town, because I'm not going to get free advertising, and my phone rang.
It wasn't at Race Track, because they're closed.
It was probably the truck stop.
I go to one of our approved gas, even when I pay.
It was only one.
So, so, so my, my phone buzzes, you know, and I look at it, and I, I'm being asked by the railroad, why this isn't on the agenda? And I replied back, I said, well, what email are you talking about? Because I didn't get any email. And, and I went, I scoured my email immediately, and I said, well, how about you resend me that email? And here's my personal email, so that way you hit me twice, and I guarantee you get it. So there I am, as I'm reading it, as I'm gassing up, by the time it gassed up, I had heartburn. And so, so I came back to City Hall, and I wrote the little thing up, and I sent it out to you all. And, and I'm sure the railroad's watching us right now.
My, my only thought-
And, and again, they've been very, they're, they're great to work with, they work with us, but I understand that this is all for safety. They have a job to do, and we've encroached, and others have encroached on the right of way, and, and the lawyers have caught up with all this, and they're out reviewing every agreement, every right of way easements, and, and their staff is being told, get out there and fix it, and, and, and resolve it.
My, my only thought is, I wonder if, if they would give us any opportunity to, to have a public hearing on it? I mean, that is a pretty major change to-
I will call tomorrow.
I mean, if, if they would allow us to at least have, to get the word out to the public that we're considering closing the Chief Street, that would seem to be of enough public interest that the public ought to have an opportunity to voice.
It just about would have to be Monday, because-
Yeah, but I, I just don't know that you can get the word out by Monday in, in a fair way. That's why I'm saying, I think maybe we ought to ask the railroad company if they can give us a couple of weeks to at least do it the right way.
That was what I, that was my concern.
I will ask them that. They're going to want to, go back, because I know we had bought some time, Chris, go back to that letter that apparently the council doesn't have in their packet. Not apparently, I know they don't have it, because I don't have it mine. So I'm, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, that's unfair.
I think the letter said, number first.
Um, let's, go up a little, um, go up a little bit. I, I thought I just saw the date.
Slide up a little, go up, go back to the other one.
Yeah, I just saw the date in there. For some reason, they thought we had an October 1st meeting, and then they had subject envelope by no later than November 1st. So-
We don't have another-
You know, to them, they, they think that we're going to go in and remove and clear all this by November 1st. So they do want an answer, response.
November 1st is our meeting.
Or something. Yeah, I knew, I knew there had to be something, because they asked us when, when we all met, so.
I'm glad they keep track of our schedule so well.
Like I said, I, hello Norfolk Southern, because, you know, I, I, I'm sure they're actually watching us.
That was my concern when I sent you in that email. I don't remember where I was, I may have still been at the dinner table when I was reading this, was, it's not-
And you didn't invite me over? I was hungry.
Wing City between Carrollton and Villarica.
I'm available.
Okay, um, healthy food. This, it's not fair for the citizens to not know, so at least they have a chance to give their input. That's, that's all they care about.
Well, I do say that, that although you all don't have, you know, I did send out a, a media blast, so I knew the media, you know, had gotten this, and I, I actually wrote a little blip that I sent out with them. I don't know if, if we've gotten any coverage yet, but-
Do we have anything on Facebook yet?
No, no, other than, you know, the links to the, everything, I haven't like said, hey, go look at this, if you will, because it's a council meeting. I mean, y'all really have to give feedback, and I'm not going to cry wolf and load up the rune until y'all sort of give me direction, because y'all may just say, you know, yeah, we'll go in there and clear cut, we're good with that. I don't know what the council's going to do, so the answer's no, I haven't.
Well, seems to me, between the Villarican and the Times Georgian-
We'll see if you can get some, some pushback time.
Yeah, I will go back, I'll make that call first thing in the morning. I will call Norfolk Southern and see, now, they're going to ask me a reasonable question, and I can anticipate it. How much time do you need? What, what are we talking about here? Because, you know, so, so I need to be able to tell them, you know, the council's saying, can you give us, you know?
I would think, you know, in order to get that, the information out to the public to say, you know, you got, we as a city, you as a citizens, have got a choice. We either close this crossing, or we clear cut all the trees. I mean, that's really the choice, one or the other. And it shouldn't take, I mean, we ought to be able to have a hearing, a, a public hearing to give people the opportunity to have some input within a couple of weeks to do that. So I would think, you know, by mid, mid-October, you could have that hearing. It's, it's not a complicated decision.
It's just a painful one.
Yeah, and it will be, because a lot of people use that crossing. It will affect some of the businesses on either side of it.
Yeah, and I know, um-
But it will affect everybody if it's a, a desert wasteland and downtown also.
Now, I'm usually not, no, no, I'm not going to say that. So, so Councilman Best has a comment or question. About the offer that was made to us? I, I, I can just read it on your forehead, sir. So go ahead and put it out there. What is it?
When you first told me this, I told him stick in your ear.
They're watching.
I thought you were cheating. You know, because the bottom line to this scenario is simple.
Park and no park.
The safety of the people of City of Villarica crossing a railroad track should be important. But the ability for us to rent the parking area and the quote-unquote railroad park for almost $6,000 a year, and for them to be able to pull it out from under us and with a 30-day notice, and that's, that's their property, so we have to live with that. I really don't have a problem with closing Chief Street. It seems like, and I was joking with the chief a few minutes ago, but it seems like every one or two months, because of the improper GPS things that these guys have in their trucks, they are told to turn and go across the track there instead of one block later. This would stop all that. This would stop everything that, that takes place with those large trucks. Now, it would also stop when we get the North Loop in, which we've been trying to-
It'll slow it down, I don't think it'll stop it.
Since we've been trying to do that since 1965, I, I don't know. But, you know, there is a benefit to this, and, and I like the idea that, you know, if, if we close Chief Street, they're going to give us 57, 57,000 dollars. But they give us about 190,000 dollars to close the street down Tyson Road, I believe it was, several years ago, which was not even close to what this is. So, and I, I don't, I'd just like to be able to sit down and, and talk to these folks and find out, you know, is it, the only reason they're doing this because of safety? It would not necessarily be the same thing that we, which used to do, because, because of the, the large trucks going across that. I, I just think more conversation should be had, and I agree with, with Mr. Mecklen that, you know, the folks in this community should be able to have some kind of say in, in, in that as well.
So we'll have a public hearing?
I, I'd like to see that.
Couple of weeks.
So there's a couple of things that-
It seems to make more sense than to have, than one day they drive up and see a barricade.
Yeah, and then want to know why they didn't have any input, yeah.
Yeah, and weren't told why, you know? Why did this have to-
So I, I'd agree on the public hearing.
I do, too, but how, how is, explain to me, how is, I'm not saying I'm against it now, how is closing Chief Street going to save the park? Explain that to me. I just, I'm, I'm not seeing it.
All right, their issue is that when the train's coming in, that with that railroad car, they have to see a specific, um-
Distance. Distance.
Distance of all vehicles at all times. So that by closing that, there's no cars coming across their track there, so they're able to push right on past the railroad park to get over to Carroll.
Oh, but it has nothing to do with footage, it's just that, that's to save this if they can keep from reali- uh, thinking that a car is fixed to go across the truck.
Yep, but we're still gonna have to move one bush over on the Carroll street side.
Yeah, but that's nothing.
But this is coming from the west direction, come ahead of east, right?
Yes, sir.
Because that's the other way you can see all, all you want to see.
Yeah.
All right, that's, I just, I wasn't visualizing how closing the street is gonna keep the park.
Yeah. And, and, and so I don't want to put words into your mouth, council member, but I think what I'm hearing you say is, um, yes on public hearing, but you also want me to go back and try to negotiate more money, uh, for the railroad crossing.
Certainly.
You just didn't say that, but I think when you mentioned Tyson's, that's where you were headed.
Exactly. Yeah, I mean-
I, I wanted to make sure that I understood that, that's, that's what I heard, but-
It wasn't direct.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, sometimes it's written right here, I, I just, you know, gotta interpret the tea leaves, so, I'm just making sure.
I'm just no fat football coach.
I will call them first thing in the morning, sir. And counsel.
Okay, are we-
Oh, they're watching.
I have a question, um, number four, yeah, we beat all of the deaf tonight. But anyway, we go too deep. One is the trailhead.
And I'll have all those additional copies that I'm missing, right before-
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
I, I thought, I know they're on the web, but, I mean, we should have also emailed them, but, yeah, the city clerk will make sure you get all these.
Thank you.
Especially this letter thing, huh?
Good afternoon, mayor and council. This item is concerning the Fullerville tr- trailhead. As you will recall, last month, we brought to your recommendation for a contractor that would move forward with the construction of the trailhead. Since our recommendation, GDOT has been reviewing the information that has been submitted, and it has come back to the city that the contractor has not met all of the requirements, uh, specifically the DBE goal, which was set forth. Um, that particular contractor identified themselves as being, uh, the contractor, as opposed to subbing it out to someone else. Uh, they identified themselves as being that particular contractor that would meet that goal requirement. GDOT has notified us that they did not meet the requirement at the time of the bid opening. Uh, it has come back to us that we have two options, that we can either move forward to the next lowest bidder, or we can rebid it out altogether. Um, we have notified the state, um, just so that you are aware. Uh, we inquired as to whether this would be, um, if there's any room for them to have some discretion. Um, we are essentially waiting to hear back from them, to see what that final word is going to be. But at this particular time, the information that has been presented to us is that they have not met the, the, uh, required goal as set forth.
What's the BBD, DBE?
Um, that's the disadvantaged business enterprise, so maybe a minority business or a, um, a woman-owned business, there's a requirement for some type of participation goal.
You have to meet certain qualifications.
Precisely.
Now, is that for, just for particular bids?
This is the, the question, um, this is actually because federal dollars are attached to this particular project, so- so this is very critical. Did you get the voicemail that I forwarded you from our state transportation board member?
Um, I did get a voicemail.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, he's checked at the highest level. He said, "Shut it down, you got to go to the next." And he, he actually, on the city's behalf, based on our inquiry, went to the commissioner of transportation and said, "I need a draw on the line, yes or no." And he came back and said, so I did call Ms. Henry and, and said, "I'm sorry, but there's nothing we can do here." So, so the council's only option is, yeah, they could go out and rebid it and start the whole clock over. That's the, that's the only option here.
The only option-
You, you, you go to your second bidder, or you, you s-
Right.
You bid the whole thing out and give them time to become, and-
Correct, and, you know, quite frankly, um, you could rebid this again, but all of these numbers are already public information. So there would be no guarantee that they will come back even the lowest bidder on the next go-round. So, um, the second lowest bidder, just so that you, um, are aware, and this is the same information that we presented to you last month, um, was the Integrated Construction and Nobility Inc. They came in, um, at the second lowest bid, which was $573,634.83.
What is, what is, what are the DBE qualifications?
Seventeen percent.
So, were they close to it, or are they?
They weren't certified at all. They didn't make any mention, they submitted, um, an application to be certified, but they're not even finished with the process, so.
Um, the word I got back is, is, as of this week, their, their paperwork is still in process. So they, they have no certification, they have no qualification, anything.
Yeah, and if they're not certified as of the time that the bids were accepted, then they can't ever be accepted unless we rebid it.
So what, what is before you, essentially, um, we will be asking, uh, approval of the second lowest bidder? Um, or should you choose to, again, tell us to just put it back out on the street?
Personally, I think, uh, if it goes back out, they've seen these numbers, they're gonna sharpen their pencil, come down a little bit on them, try to beat the other person.
Is there any type of time restriction on when we have to spend this money?
I certainly can go back and have a conversation. Um, you really are on the tail end of having had this, these funds, uh, allocated to the city for some time. Um, and if, I don't know if you will recall, the funds have been, um, the city has had funds deobligated for not moving on projects, so, um-
Why have we not moved on the project and lost money?
Because we take so long.
You take so long to move on.
I, i- if you actually think about this one, this actually is the original, 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 original trail from Shoreline on into downtown. Um, and that project has carried over and then was, uh, reinvented and, 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 um, given life support, and then became the Fullerville Trailhead Project. So, you know, th- th- this, this particular TE project, and they don't even do TE projects anymore, they don't exist. Um, so i- it's got quite the history on this one.
That, that was my memory, i- is that there was some restriction, that if we didn't spend the money by X date, it was gonna vanish on us, and, and rebidding the project is gonna take sixty, ninety days or so.
A- and, and I would certainly say that, um, to that point, you'd really already be into December, and, you know, typically-
I think we should move ahead.
You'd be probably waiting till the spring, um, for construction to start again, if you're waiting that much longer, so.
So, so Rover Barrel, is that what you're saying, uh?
Yeah, I mean, that's my worry, is that we don't want to procrastinate so long-
The money will disappear on us.
That we wake up one day with missing a half million dollars. I, I, I don't know what that date is, but that is a concern that the, before we decide to rebid it, we need to make sure that we won't lose the money.
How do we decide that?
I, I guess that's just something for us to look into between now and Tuesday, to, to know that for sure, so that you can have the information when you make your decision on Tuesday.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah, huge difference.
I mean, at the, at the end of the day, the question is, you know, these are federal, federal dollars. Um, obviously, you know, we, we have a specific match, but our match is already in, um, the pavilion and things are being built over there. So, um, uh, the, the Henry, uh, construction, which, which was the low bidder, they're the only local business, you know, Villa Rica business. So, uh, the, the question then comes, if you rebid out, you know, what is your rationale or reason, um, for going back to bid? If it is only to capture Henry as the ultimate contractor, then that question you, you is best asked of your city attorney, um, because you, you are dealing with federal funds here.
One glaring issue is saving $25,000.
Twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, we'll waste, we'll waste some of that on just going out to rebid the whole thing again.
We can vote on it Tuesday night.
All right, item two is Badge Fest.
So the Department of Park Recreation and Leisure Services received a request for the use of the V-Plex. The applicant, for all intents and purposes, J&amp;P Production, uh, was seeking to partner with the Georgia Chapter of Fraternal Order of Police to do a fundraiser for public safety officers. We had a chance to meet with the applicant along with the chief of police. Um, they're looking to essentially partner in some senses with the city, and they're looking to request a waiver of the, um, rental fee for a portion of the facility. And, um, I have both the applicant here as well as, um, Chief Mansour, maybe we give you a little bit more background on, um, some of the fundraising, I guess in association with the Fraternal Order of Police. But both of them are here, if you have some additional questions that you may be able to ask. But essentially, it's just a request of a fee waiver, uh, for the city to partner, if you will, that be different.
When does baseball start?
Baseball would start prior to this, we'd be ending already in May. Um, so we already checked the schedule on athletics for next year, and we don't see a conflict.
We ending in May, and this is from May 13th?
This is for May 13th, and we've already checked, we don't have anything that's anticipated to be on the calendar, so.
Okay, my biggest question is gonna be, how much of the money that is raised at this event actually goes to support, uh, police officers?
I certainly can bring the applicant, uh, to, to Mr. Garland.
Hi, thank you very much. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Joey Garland. I'm employed through Douglas County Sheriff's Office, twenty-seven years, uh, last thirteen, it's, uh, been assigned to the U.S. Marshals Violent Fugitive Task Force. Uh, you asked what that has in relation to Badge Fest. Well, also, I, I grew up in a family, uh, third-generation professional musician, grew up in a family show and so forth. Uh, so, as much as I am in law enforcement, I'm also in the music business. Uh, to kind of give you, and I can, I can kind of take you along through the PowerPoint and help, help explain how we got here, and to, uh, answer your question, Mr. Carter, I'll get to that in the PowerPoint in just a minute. Um, several years back, uh, an artist by the name of Derek Schumaker, uh, recorded a video, uh, had a record deal, the video went top five on CMT. His manager, uh, which will, I'll play you just a short piece of it here in just a minute. Uh, his manager had, uh, said, "Well, you've really tapped into that law enforcement world. We need somebody to handle you that knows that business." So that's how I got involved, uh, with his management. So the inspiration behind Badge Fest was Derek Schumaker, the artist, if you'll go to the next slide, please. Yeah, so that's why I was saying, he's the inspiration, just go to the next one. If you just click on that, right there, there, the video played. And I'll just play you just a piece of it. Uh, it's a touching video, like I say, and, uh, I don't know if you're able to hear that. Okay, all right, well, I'll just tell you about it. The, the video was shot in front of the, uh, Denver, um, Police Memorial. In the video, it shows some of the family of the fallen officers standing in front of the memorial. Uh, one of the scenes in that video that really, uh, touched my heart and got me involved with Derek is the little boy sitting there in his, uh, dad's uniform, campaign hat, with his mother, and you see the ghost in uniform putting his hand on their back and so forth. Uh, Derek was, we were invited to the, uh, to DC, uh, to perform during National Police Week at the Washington Memorial Candlelight Vigil, uh, which later on led to, uh, we went to, uh, New Orleans, uh, New Orleans Police Department, uh, created, uh, Badge Fest, New Orleans. And what they were doing was raising money for officers, public safety people, uh, personnel with career-ending injuries. Now, most of you probably know, if, for line-of-duty deaths, federal money and just, uh, uh, an outcry of money comes in and, and, and helps those families. But for those public safety officers that are injured, have career-ending injuries, nothing more than a little disability check. So I really felt that that was a good cause. Uh, then later on, uh, Badge Fest Illinois, which is where Derek's from, his hometown, uh, we did a small version of it there. And, uh, so, you know, and here I am, law enforcement in Georgia, right here in the metro Atlanta area, in Douglas County. Why can't we do that here? And take care somewhere wrong. So I reached out to Fraternal Order of Police of Georgia Chapter, uh, and basically in a nutshell, uh, you'll see right here on this slide, uh, we chose the V-Plex for several reasons. Uh, one, it's just a good location logistically for parking, uh, and location and that's, that sort of thing. And as my comp- my company, J&amp;P Productions, will be handling all the logistics and so forth, uh, Joey Thurman Entertainment will be providing entertainment as well, uh, with a circus, you can go to the next slide. And this is some of the entertainment we have lined up, you can go to another one. That's some of the performers. Now Joey used to work here for Villa Rica Police Department before he, uh, retired and, and bought this circus. So, and you can go to the next one.
One of our police officers went off and joined the circus, huh?
Yeah, yeah, he and his wife, his kids, uh, his son just actually got a, uh, American League, uh, umpire. It's a small circus, it's not, it's not, you know, it doesn't take a lot of room. They have the big wheels, they have the clowns, they have some, uh, balancing acts and, and, uh, juggling and stuff like that. So it's all done in a spot, so you can move forward if you need to.
Move forward.
All right, it also has, he'll also be providing the Jer- uh, the dinosaur show, Jurassic Kingdom. These dinosaurs he purchased from the, uh, producers of the Jurassic Park movie. So, uh, if you click on that, right there, you click right, you go to the next one, click on it. Go back, just click in the dark area. You actually see a little bit of, uh, yeah. So the dinosaur, you see how much room that takes, it's not much room at all. You have to stay on it to see the dinosaur, but that's okay, you get the idea. Uh, these are some pictures from previous Badge Fest, uh, that's been done. This is our sponsor package that we'll offer to the sponsors. Uh, the, uh, platinum level, of course, will be the, uh, exclusive to the stage. It can be divided in half with two major sponsors to buy the name, the name of the stage, or one person can buy two packages and get the entire stage. Uh, we plan on having applicants, uh, apply for vending to set up, uh, whether it be retailers that sell tactical gear, public safety gear, that kind of thing, as well as food vendors, uh, on, on the other side of the field. You can move forward there. Keep going, I just said. Uh, security be provided, of course, by Chief Mansour's personnel, as well as some of my personnel, which are Georgia law enforcement officers, handling some of the backstage security and dignitary protection and that kind of thing. Again, these are the, uh, people who will be running the event, ready or not. Productions will be doing all the audio staging and lighting, uh, they're out of Rome, uh, they're over here in Rome. They're out of Rome, they're over here in Rome, Georgia, in Floyd County. The Fraternal Order of Police will, once, once we pay all the, the performers and expenses, well, J&amp;P Productions will take 10% off the top from administrative costs, pay all the expenses, and then what's left will go to the FOP for the funds. I, Derek Schumaker, will be on the board with FOP to decide where this money will be dispersed. We'll let each department in the state, state and local departments, submit candidates who they feel deserves some assistance from these funds, and we on the board will decide who, how to disperse that. My main goal is to make sure that, that it's used in the most maximum and helpful way that it can. I can give some handouts here.
I still need the question answered. Out of each dollar, how much of it goes to, for the public safety officers? How much of it do they actually get?
I'm putting the stage, if, if, right now, and I think we passed that slide, we're gonna have the cops jam band, the Outpost Opera Variety Show, and hopefully, we're gonna have Steven Seagal come headlining. That's not confirmed. Still dealing with contracts with him. Estimating the stage cost to be about $20,000. So, we'll have to, depends on how much we raise in the sponsorship to cover that. I hope to raise enough money to cover that entire cost of, of the stage production. Then we have some logistical staff and stuff like that. So, once all that's paid and 10% off the top, whatever's left, now, we're thinking around 20, 20 bucks a head to get into the facility, to see the show. That includes everything. Do an armband. So, if you come and come back, you have your armband, you get back in, so it'll be 20 bucks a head.
Is this, is this your first event?
Oh, no, sir.
So, you've done these before?
First Badge Fest for here.
For here?
Yes, sir. And we hope to do it every year as long as.
Where was the previous one held?
We, we did Badge Fest New Orleans and Illinois, and we did, it wasn't called Badge Fest, but we did a public safety thing over at the Paulding Airport. It was pretty recent that we did. You saw the pictures in there. We're Glockit sponsored that. And we did some demonstrations with the bomb squad and K-9s.
The last one you held, how much money did you raise for the police safety, public safety officers? How much did they actually save?
You talking about for Paulding?
Any of them.
Okay. I, I don't know about Paulding. We would just hire performers for that, and, and, and we did a discount rate on that. New Orleans was somewhere around 20,000. And that was the first one that we did there was around 20,000. The second one, I want to say it was about 26,000 after all expenses was paid. I'll be glad to give you a handout. In, in these handouts, it will have the committee members that's on our committee to set all this up. Also has the sponsor package information, as well as the, is my staff and support team.
Did you keep a copy of the presentation? Make sure you, yeah, make sure you make a copy, so, 'cause that way it's entered into the record.
Yeah, and the videos on there really explain to you a little more about, you know, what the circus consists of, the shows and so forth. Some of you probably didn't even know Steven Seagal was a musician.
I gotta admit, there's some show I know, it's like, I didn't know that Steven Seagal was the deputy sheriff. He, he does something on some channel, and it was like Channel 900 on my thing. And one night, I got, I don't know, I, after like 12 episodes, I just, I just watched it, watched it, watched it. It's pretty hilarious, but I never knew that he had been a sheriff's deputy reserve in, in different places.
Yeah, he was, on direct, it was on A and E, I think, Steven Seagal Lawman. And he was, he was a deputy sheriff in Jefferson Parish for about 20 years. He just recently went to work for the sheriff in, I believe, Arkansas, and some of those series of that show was taking place there. He's filming a movie out there, was gonna be out there for like three years, and bought a house out there while he's producing this movie, so he went to work with the local sheriff there. But he's also an accomplished musician. He has some, if you check out his website, and of course, you get the presentation, you'll see some of his performance. And my thinking was, what a better, what a better fit, you know, for, for a concert-type fundraiser, him, him being a law enforcement musician. So, I just couldn't, so I hope that works out with him contract-wise. If it doesn't, some of the people we have in mind on, to, to talk with is the Bacon Brothers. Kevin Bacon, the actor, also a good musician, as well as some other people that we can reach out to. In my show that you'll see on the presentation, Michael Twitty works on our show, Conway Twitty's son. He, he, he's been working for me for several years now, so he's also another that I can bring out, probably.
You probably don't have any idea how many people you might expect to attract out there. But, you know, people often talk about the V-Plex as being, including that field out there that we always use for parking. That doesn't belong to the city, and we don't have any right to. So, I mean, if you can't park all the cars on the actual V-Plex complex, that's a problem.
Yes, sir. Yes, I understand that property belongs to Ingalls, I think.
It does.
In my conversation with Mr. Coleman and the chief, we, we knew, you know, if we're able to be approved and perceived forward, that we will need to secure that.
And the front property is also privately owned?
Which front property are we talking about?
The one the road goes through, not where the lights at.
Yeah, so the front couple of acres there, the front on 61 does not belong to the city.
Oh, okay.
Where the billboard is? Both sides of the road, all the way up to the road that comes in from the other way, where the parking lot. And actually, the guy who sold the V-Plex to the city kept, I think it's four acres, five acres somewhere there?
Yeah, Mr. Tatum.
Yeah, Tatum.
Tatum.
So, that's something that has to be tracked down. I'm gonna have a couple of questions for staff as far as cost to us, staff feels, where, where all of it's gonna occur? Will it affect our football field? Those are just things I'm writing down. I put down a number of people parking, 'cause that was my same concern. Is there enough parking? And, and do we have a guideline for when we, remember, we've talked about this for like a year? Some kind of guideline on these memorandum of understandings on when we're going to waive fees and when we're not? I'm just looking for some guidance from staff.
Well, let me answer that right out of the gate. The council gave direction. You said everybody pays. I mean, if I misunderstood council, but, I mean, that was the consensus. It's like, well, everybody pays.
Okay, so that's something we, we're gonna have to talk about. Because, like, for instance, Taste of Villareck, obviously, we're, we're giving
Yeah.
Certain supplies to them, canopies, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we've got an idea for you. It'll come, you'll see it come up in the 2017 budget proposals. I, I've got a idea of how to address that. But, but, but of course, the council has always the right of the MOU to say, "Okay, that's the policy, but..."
But somebody puts in a request, and we can choose.
To answer one of your other questions, you asked about where exactly. What they requesting was the use of the football field, essentially the same area where we hold our July 3rd fireworks event. So, staff certainly met with them to talk about what some of the limitations were in terms of loading on that field, places that you can be, that you can't be, and what the challenges were. So, we absolutely explained that to, we explained that part to them. We also just, again, addressed some of the issues related to parking and what they would be required to work on and what would be their responsibility. And as far as security, again, Chief Manseur was part of that meeting about what the requirements typically are on their part that we use for any kind of private event that brings a large group in, that the city, their police work with the applicant as far as security.
What's the, what would be the fee? What fee are we waiving? What amount of fee are we waiving, if we chose to waive it?
So, for, I'd have to go back and double-check. I was looking to see if I actually had that packet of, of what that particular ball field, for that football field. I don't know if that was me or not, for the ball, for that particular football field. 'Cause that's all they were asking for at this, at this time.
Unless there's some logistical reason that, you know, would be water spray, irrigation, or something like that. I know the school's gonna provide me a map that I've set up before for some of the other events, but should be able to, and I know that Luke Bryan came before, I think the Hill post comes down where the stage can go. So, I'm visualizing it as the circus, the show, or one end of the field, the stage, and the other, and vendors around the outside, and spectators in the middle.
Is that where Luke Bryan was? I know, I thought he was down in the field.
He was.
I mean, the field, field.
We certainly learned from what some of the challenges are with that. And one of the reasons why we recommended, if anything, showing him the layout of what we, what we do with July 3rd is because of where we have the stage set up and any vendors or participants around the perimeter of the ball field. And there's another section that's closer to where the civic center is down on the side. That's, we usually have the carnival-type events set up down there. We thought that would be a more appropriate setup than however it may have been done for Luke Bryan.
I know another question that probably hasn't been asked yet, that we don't, not planning any alcohol this event. We have a family that, and as we know, in our law enforcement role in the nation right now, I think it's, it would be also a good community relation. And I, I would suspect probably 90% of the families wouldn't be law enforcement.
We all plan to charge entrance fee on this.
Yes, sir.
How much?
Well, we're, right now, I'm thinking like 20 bucks a head. Be 20 or 25. A lot of that's gonna dictate whether we get the waiver, you know? If not, then they have to be more, or we may have to look for secondary location. I want to keep it reasonable so that families can come of whatever financial status they.
All right, so, so looking at this, you're talking $300. Are they using the civic center?
No, we didn't request the civic center.
Are they using any of the athletic fields?
The football field.
So, what, is that one field?
That's one field.
Are they using the concession stand?
No, sir.
All right, so you're talking 150 bucks? I'll write you a check and donate that right now.
Thank you.
Quite frankly, if that's what cost we're talking about, and, and to keep council, you know, happy on, on work, I'll write that check right now. So, so, so then the question is, what, what are they asking for? I mean, they'll need a special event permit, but if we're talking 150 bucks, I'll, I'll donate that, and I, I don't want any sponsorship.
Thank you. Now, the civic center, is that the building?
That is the building.
Okay.
And if I could say, sometimes applicants come in and they don't fully understand all of what they're really asking for. So, the fact that you ask that now, he may just say.
If you want the building, I'll throw that in too. And I'll give you this, I'll give you the, the concession stands. I'll do 500 bucks.
Before we get too far down that road, though, I'm not sure that we have ever rented out
The whole facility.
The whole complex on fees like that. I mean, Luke Bryan, I believe, paid, paid $5,000 to $10,000 for it.
That's why I'm saying, is I'm looking at this. I'm like, really? Yeah, I'll, I'll cover it.
Well, see, I think it's a different thing when a baseball team comes into play, and you're renting a baseball field to have baseball on it. It is a different thing. That's why I'm looking at, talking about cost and what we're gonna do. This is different to me, but apparently, that's, our rates aren't even set up for this. This is a special event all over the field. Is there damage to the field? Will it cost the city? See, those are all the things going through my head. Is it gonna cost us hundreds to repair the field to get it? I don't know. That's why I'm looking to staff to ask those questions.
And they're fair questions, and, and, and if, if the council decides they want to move forward with it, 'cause you're absolutely right, because what, what we all just learned today is that, wow, we probably need to revise the fee structure a little.
Well, that's probably meant for a team coming.
Second, the second is, is that in any agreement, we're gonna require them to have insurance anyway. So, that's all gonna be spelled out anyway. So, so, like, that's why I said is, if, if that's what we're talking about dollar-wise, let's move on past that and get to the larger question of, you're gonna have a, a special event, and, and that's a special, you know, so, so let's, I would say, frame the question around that, knowing that there's a, a event in here that starts at 7:00 o'clock.
My, my question was framed around, if you grossed a hundred thousand, and these guys only got 20,000 of it, that doesn't seem like a very profitable thing. Everybody else is getting a lot of money, but they're getting a small part of it.
No, 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 no. The, the, like I say, 10% will come off the top, and that is mainly because for this particular project, I'm going into this with zero. Basically, coming out of pocket, that 10% will be reserved for operation money for next year. If you know what I'm saying, just for operational costs. Now, Steven Seagal and all the other performers have already cut their rate as much as 50% to, for.
I just don't wanna see us do, put on a huge event, but nothing goes to these people we're supposed to be doing it for.
Yeah.
And I think that's, that's one thing we, we talked a little bit about, just like we talked with Vicki about the football field. We're gonna make sure they understand what they can and can't do on there, and where they can go and stuff like that, to make sure there's no damage. But as far as your thing, to me, you know, this is one of those, we're gonna have to go on faith at first and make them do us a report for next year, so that shows that, yeah, this went towards this. If they don't, they don't do it again. It's pretty simple. I mean, if, if they don't hold up.
I support the event.
Yeah, I agree, and I know that.
I just don't wanna see you get a penny of the dollar.
Is that we wanna make sure they're gonna do, and, and I know this guy 20 years. I know he's a good guy. He's not gonna do us wrong in that. I'm not involved in the money part of it, obviously, but what I'm saying is, if, if he doesn't do what he's supposed to do this time, he won't do it again.
Or, or we just use them for volunteers for tasing.
Yeah.
I mean, so, so screw up our field. We immediately put them in Perry's volunteer group for tasing.
I've, I've been tased before.
So.
But no, I, I don't have a problem either, providing, once the event's over, give you a line item.
Okay.
Be as transparent as we can. I, I don't, you know, one thing I like about the Shriners, they operate on 1% admin cost, you know? And so, you know.
I would support the event. I just would like to see most of the money go toward who we're doing the event for.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, if, if only 400 people show up, I take the hit.
Ooh.
I think you'll get more than that.
And, and so you know, if, if the council does approve of you on Tuesday, I, I wasn't joking. I'll write that check.
Well, thank you very much.
Huh? You can afford twice that. Hold up, hold out for that.
Hey, I gotta, I gotta negotiate with the.
Somebody needs to figure out what they do need and what they don't need, as far as the additional building, everything else.
Oh, yes.
Well, now, one thing, you know, we're, we can set up a tent, or if the building's available. I don't think in May it's gonna be too, too hot, but we're always gonna have to have an EMS, a triage tent or something. Now, if the building's available, it's not, I don't mind.
Where are the VIPs staying? They staying in their motorhomes?
On the bus or.
Usually, you have to have some.
Yeah, we'll have a tent for them, yeah.
What do they call that? Like, when you go to football, whoa.
Like a hospitality, something or another?
When is the Holiday Express supposed to be finished?
Green room?
Well, normally for outdoor, we'll set up the bicycle-type barricades and have a tent.
Oh, tailgating, that's what it's called. Tailgating, the motorhomes. I wasn't thinking about hospitality room. You asked about the motorhomes.
Remember, now, you were in Georgia in May, tailgating? Nah.
So, we're, we're done with that, huh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have Citizens Academy at 7:00.
Yeah, I reminded them, 7:00, 7:00, gotta go. I know, I know, I know, but.
Well, we got here at 5:00 till, so.
Yeah, we don't want y'all in the pizza.
Uh-huh.
Oh, hey.
Hey, Pete, how come you have to stay?
Yeah.
Hey, next is the
Nugget drop.
Moving right along.
Poor Chris, poor Chris. I, I feel so, I, I feel your pain.
I have to sit through these things. If I were out there, were you, I'd have to have
First in for that. All right. Vicky, nugget drop. Let's make it happen.
Let's get this.
Uh, this, uh, final item that I have is, um, we put out the invitation bid for the nugget drop, the fireworks for the nugget drop. We had two respondents, both of them came back at thirty-five hundred dollars.
Imagine that. Same as last year and the year before, right?
Correct.
How come you only have data in here for one of the responders?
I'm sorry?
How come we only have paperwork for one responder?
Because it's the one that we're making the recommendation on, uh, the East Coast Pyrotechnics. The other one certainly came back with, um, a couple of larger shells that we had some concerns with as it relates to this building that we explicitly said, do not do, do not use.
Yeah.
Um, and so...
So they got, they got shoved out the side cause they did, they didn't follow their directions.
That is correct.
Okay.
And so, and we have used East Coast, um, Pyrotechnics, so we are familiar with them and...
We've been using it for twenty years.
But they don't necessarily mean they're gonna be addressed.
Yes.
They locked their, they locked their keys in their, uh, truck last year.
I guess we had a police to get it out, didn't we?
No, they called nine-one-one. Uh, that's the most hilarious thing.
One of our comedians did that too.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, his key fob was on the car and he drove away.
Yeah. No, they don't have a question.
All right, anyway, come on.
All right. Economic development, who, who that is?
Do you, do you just wanna wait till Tuesday?
I don't know. You should
No, I don't wanna wait till Tuesday.
You pay them extra for having to sit through this.
Berlin's already standing there. There's several things to go.
Well, he already said no to it, so.
Oh, all right. It's all yours.
Must.
I promise you, I'm gonna go fast on this one.
Why? Everybody is
Every, every dollar counts. I mean...
All right. You get your turn.
You got an hour, go ahead.
You had to sit through all of that.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
He's staring down that candy bar.
I did eat my candy bar, so I have my second wind here. Um, where you go, you hate jokes too. Wait for Alisa to pull up my PowerPoint here.
Hit that five, that five.
We won't take very long here. This is pitch almost.
Stand up for a second.
Go ahead. Uh, what we want to discuss with you today is implementation of some of the concepts and the master plan that we adopted, uh, that the council adopted a few months ago. Um, just briefly, master plan or ideas. This is what should go here. This is what we think would help, um, make downtown a vibrant place. So the pictures and the master plan was the easy part. The hard part is actually implementing the things in there. Uh, so we've been working very diligently to do that. Um, so we've identified some first phase things to do. Uh, the first thing, Alisa, go to the next one, is the, um, gateway signage. As I said, again, these are just concepts. So what we've done is we've engaged Sign Works, which is a Carrollton based business, to do a lot of sign work, um, all over the state. They've done a lot. Just the closest I could get to Villa Rica.
It's all, we're all Carroll County.
Yeah, we're all Carroll County. Um, great company though. They do a lot of the, the signs that you see around. Councilman Best was already voted.
Where is this here?
I'm sorry?
Where is this?
Uh, this is going from City Hall towards downtown, where all the political signs go.
That's all you have to say. We all know where
Where all the political signs go.
All right.
Uh, go to the next one. Uh, this is coming in from Douglasville. Uh, next one.
Lovely concrete building over there that Ryan has.
Well, I got plans on that. Go ahead, next one. This is, uh, our new three-way stop intersection there, which I will say for the record, I was sitting at the stop sign and a truck came flying by. I was like, whoa, whoa, this, you were just talking to the person next to him, did not stop at all. I was like, there, there you go. Right as, yeah, it's just a gesture. Uh, the next?
You didn't see a policeman nearby?
Uh, no comment, no comment. Cause I'll be seeing them all the time if I say that.
Looking in your rearview mirror, son.
So what we've done here is we, what we did was it gave Sign Works Pro, uh, the concept. They went and actually got, what is the hard cost to actually manufacture and install that sign? And what they've done for us is this actually has backlighting. So the litters at night will actually glow with a warm soft light. So it'd be really nice, uh, at nighttime. Uh, so one is the glowing is kind of the backlight one and then the one during the daytime. Next.
It, it, it was, it was, go back a second. Is, is this a Happy Valley?
Yes.
So you wanna put the sign in the railroad's, move on.
Yeah. In railroad, right away.
Move on.
Absolutely. We're gonna negotiate it in the deal with the rest of the stuff.
Apparently so.
I got a lot of stuff to put in that.
Right. That sign is no more than twelve inches, by the way.
So, um, so we also went a step further and did, um, this, this stuff comes from the, um,
Focus groups.
Focus groups that we did and also from the, um, the thing we did in January with Main Street where all y'all came and put the stars, uh,
The retreat.
The retreat, yes, the retreat. So the, the merchant directional signs, the kiosk and the parking signs. Next. Uh, so this is a map that kind of lays out where all of these signs. So A are the gateway signs. B are the kiosks. So we're proposing to put a kiosk at the mill on either side of the tracks, uh, on Main Street and seventy-eight. And hopefully what will be the new welcome center will have a kiosk as well. Uh, then the parking signs will be strategically placed. So when you come into town, we can direct you to where parking lots are and then the directional signs as well. Next. Uh, so what we're proposing with the merchandise, merchant directional signs is a very similar concept you see on the interstate, uh, with these, what DOT calls logo signs. Basically, we're, the concept is to lease space on those signs. So, you know, we have a lot of businesses downtown. How do you determine who gets on the sign? You lease it to them and then whoever buys a spot, then they'll get a spot on the sign. Right. Whoever checked here, that's who gets it. Uh, so what we're proposing from the DDA is that, um, the DDA would manage, uh, the upkeep and maintenance and also the management of the, the lease of the signs. Uh, this is a proposal that I put together. As I told the DDA Monday when I did the same presentation, that the market is really gonna determine what the price is. Cause obviously we've not done this before in Villa Rica.
Beg pardon?
We've not done this type of lease space before in Villa Rica.
Yes, we have. We did kiosk signs for way back about seven years ago. Letting you get through, but I, I've been interrupted. Well, we, we've tried this before, by the way.
You've installed the signs and everything?
Nobody would buy them.
Oh.
We tried it. We just didn't get it out of the, uh, out of the car.
We plan to be successful with this. Uh, so the, the, um,
It's a new day.
It's a new day. Uh, I've done a lot of things in Villa Rica that people said wouldn't work. You'd be surprised. Um, so, um, what we're proposing here is obviously that the market will dictate what the final price. These are just guidelines and suggestions. Obviously you get a, a discount for the level of commitment that you contribute and we want that because I'd rather collect more money over a longer period of time than a little money over a short period of time. So, um, and we'll look at that and adjust that as, as, as the market dictates, I say. Um, so, uh, basically what we're proposing is that we would like for, uh, the council to move forward and have, um, these installed and then we would enter into a management agreement with the DDA for the maintenance, upkeep and management of the sign. Next.
You hit us with the big one yet to reconcile?
Yeah. So that's the first one. Any questions about that?
Yes. My, my first question is, so like, you know, the little sign that gives you the direction to the police department, are, are we going to pay for the, the one that points to the police department?
Well, sure.
If the police department wants them, yeah.
Well, they very, get some drug seizure money then. Cause I need one for City Hall too.
You've got plenty of money.
Yeah, he's loaded with all the money.
We'll, we'll get you a bus so that you can make up
So it's not just leasing space like on the highway ones with the restaurants. The little ones downtown are leasing space too.
Yeah, like if you see the signs, the blue signs where it says this sign sponsor, one, one coming in is sponsored by Lost Cowboys. Uh, so yeah, they're off the interstates as well. So we're just doing the same concept, but just for downtown.
Okay.
By the way, I couldn't help, but the blue sign you showed had in the lower left-hand corner, roosters and the bottom right-hand corner said goats. Because I remember in last month's meeting, Danny said, I'm okay with goats. I just don't want any roosters.
Right.
I mean, go figure.
Well, we won't sell any rooster signs then.
So if it says parking and point, who's, who leases that when it's assigned point of the city?
We're, we're suggesting that there's rental just for the, the merchant direction.
I give sixty-four percent of that back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
Uh, now for the other part, uh...
So is that, uh, uh, so what you're really saying is that's gonna be in your 2017, um, budget proposal?
Correct.
Uh, that will come to the council.
That is correct.
Just wanted them to, to know that, cause he did submit this. Stop grinning over there, Councilman Best.
Just some questions I'll ask Tuesday night.
Ask them now so I can be prepared, you know? I wanna make sure your answers get, your questions get answered thoroughly.
I think the failure before was they threw the kiosk out on the street and then they went to sell the product to people. The issue was that when they went to shopping centers, they already had big signs up out front of shopping centers. And the people that they tried, you know, they, they did industrial, commercial, various things and various size signs and colors. And truly, there was probably eight or ten kiosks around the city and they, there probably wasn't more than two or three on each of those kiosks. And I, I guess my suggestion would be is to go to the people that might purchase those and, and come up with a list of, of a lot of them. And then let's look and see the economic part of it, how much you wanna charge them or, or whatever, but, but get an idea of how many people would really truly like to do something like that. Now, I understand about people downtown. Uh, that's fine. Um, but that's not the ones that you're trying to get to. The ones you're trying to get to is that eighteen subdivisions up one oh one to tell those folks where certain things are. The ones that are coming in from off I twenty going to, to Gold Mine, they want to go and eat or, or maybe spend the night. You were trying to do something that way. Uh, but there again, um, you know, and I, I forget who did it, but it was, it was a company that did it and they stayed up forever. And finally this, there was one on Is Road and Daniel with that intersection. Finally it just up and disappeared. It just disappeared. So I, you know, I just, and, and it's a great idea, but I, you know, I, I don't wanna see you, uh, fall backward in it based on, on what happened in the past. But that's just, that's, that's what's happening in the past. And you change your
Well, that's good. downturn effect on too. Cause right after they put them out.
Yeah, well, that's definitely, uh, good information to know. You know, I don't know if y'all are aware, in my former life, I was a sales manager. So I'm pretty good at selling stuff. I used to teach people to sell advertising for a living. So,
Okay.
You know, we have a goal to, that what we want to accomplish. Um, you know, we're not gonna put these things up until we have the spot sold. So we're not gonna be just sitting around.
Fortunately for you, we're just now coming out of the economic downturn. So you have a good chance of things like that.
Right.
I can't say but two things, yes or no.
Right.
I've got a good house we will look at now. We selling this house or what?
Uh, we, that would be a great idea. We will sell the house. Uh, this is, uh, the combined welcome center retail. Uh, we'll start off with the retail, uh, the, uh, residential welcome retail. We'll start off with the residential. This is the duplex, uh, there behind the old, what we call Butterballs facility, which we will now call the Villa Rica Regional Information Center. Uh, this is what was the renderings in the, um, master plan. As you all will recall, uh, the council approved the hiring of an architect, um, and the DDA did that, re-engaged an architect. We've been working with him for the last two months. He's come up with some design rendering. So we'll go to the next one.
What was it? We hired him to give us a cost estimate for that roof and everything.
Right. For the whole property.
The entire property.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That's what you, um...
That's what I'm presenting right now.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, so this is the exterior rendering of that duplex, um, with exterior, with, uh, front improvements. Uh, there also will be a deck that will be added to the back, um, landscaping in the yard. Very simple upgrades, but, uh, really makes that, uh, area very attractive. Um, if we go to the next slide.
Looks like AstroTurf.
Uh, this is, uh, basically a, a floor diagram of that facility. Uh, it's basically a mirror image, one bedroom duplex on both sides. Again, adding, uh, to the front and then replacing the deck in the back. And then the only thing that will be done to the interior is painting. Um, we have had engineers and everybody go in the building and structurally sound and everything. So, um, basically the, the major part that we'll do on the interior is this, uh, sand, uh, strip the floors and refinish them and, and put a fresh coat of paint and clean up, uh, areas in there that might need cleaning, but there'll be no construction or anything. Won't tear down any walls or anything like that. Next slide. Uh, this is, uh, what was in the master plan for, uh, the welcome center. Go to the next one. Uh, this is the exterior rendering, uh, from the architect. What we've done is really, um, just cleaned it up, really kept everything, um, streamlined like it was, like it is originally or like it is now. Um, some of that had to do with trying to keep the cost down, uh, for the facility. Uh, the bays there, you'll see the doors will be replaced. They'll still be, um, operable. So you'll be able to open it up like a garage door, but they will have what were called man doors built inside of them. So it'll be a retail door built inside of each one of those, uh, garage doors. So you don't have to let up the whole thing, uh, whenever you're trying to enter and exit.
Hey, is that a dog in the background?
Yeah, it's pet friendly. So that way you know, if the council says no, you're gonna make a contribution to this project too?
Well, I, I, I was gonna give you another comment, uh, about some of your models here.
I, I didn't make, I did not
A little too scantily clad here and a little too much skin showing for my taste.
It's supposed to make the building look sexy. You're worrying about the wrong thing, baby.
Yeah, look at the building, boy's dancing with the stars.
Um, so these are just some day and night shots.
I've never worn DVD.
Uh, just a front view. Continue. Uh, if you notice, we're, there's inset lighting that goes around the perimeter of the building. We will retain that, replace it, replace the, um, electrical components in it and put LED, but the, all of the lighting that goes around the exterior, we will retain that in the, in the renovation. Continue.
It's all gonna survive. Liking that.
Does this go along with the historical or hysterical, whichever one you wanna call it?
Hey, 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 hey.
A, a, uh, setting of the city?
Yeah. This is, we're basically, um, so the thing you need to know, the, the building's really art deco building. So when it was originally built, it didn't have that brick on it. It was a very, if you remember the twenties, thirties, art deco, very straight, clean lines.
Ain't that old now? Just hold on.
If you remember.
Some people have just studied it. They don't
If you will remember your schooling, you will know.
We can do that kind of
You learned.
We didn't learn.
So this is, uh, really embracing the original design of the building, but also what it is today. So, yeah.
That's what threw me, cause I felt like...
It's pretty modern, isn't it?
Yes. It almost looked like it lost its historical thing, but you're going previous historical.
I mean, if we were to do it all the way back, we'd rip the brick off and everything. It was a very, it was a very whitewashed, white building, very clean look. If you go back in this Google art deco, you'll see how a lot of the buildings were back
We looked at some of that in Savannah when I was on, on, uh, one of those classes where we went around, looked at all the buildings at the de, various ages of
So this is actually picking up some of the stuff before it was brick.
Art deco, man. I think of like Miami Beach, Gulf Beach.
Uh, this is interior office space here. So this is a view of what it'll look like on the inside. Um, just very clean, uh, very rustic looking. Um, not a lot of decor in there. Basically just painting the walls white. This, the, uh, roof ceiling beams will be exposed. Air ducts will be exposed. So there'll be no drop ceiling or anything. Next. I see people coming in. This is a meeting room here, uh, which will be that center bay. And then the third slide is the, uh, that is the pop-up retail space that will be in there. Basically giving them a spec building, if you will, uh, for that last area. All right, next. Uh, one of the issues that everybody keeps talking about is parking. Uh, the yellow is the dedicated onsite parking that will be allocated for that.
Does someone wake up Pete, let him know we go home?
Pete's not asleep. He's looking at my eye, Greg. Not that boring, Dave.
It's not you, it's us.
So the yellow is the primary parking, as I tell people, you know, there's been a lot of concern about parking, but this facility will have more dedicated parking than any other structure in downtown, so. Uh, I feel good about that, but then we also pointed out secondary parking, which requires you to take a couple of more steps, but it was in realistic vicinity to the building. And then there's potential to coordinate and work with the actual building owners next to actually just do one big surface parking to be shared by all the facilities.
That's okay, no, 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 that's okay, you go.
Um, what I've done here is tried to color coordinate what I call the profit or revenue points in this building. I don't think that there's probably a building on the planet that's this small that's been programmed with so much stuff in it. Uh, and it's really going to be interesting to see how this works, but we really wanted to put together a well-thought-out plan that made sense, that we thought could help really make this project work. Uh, so the green area, again, is the retail pop-up area, the light blue is meeting space and/or common space. So what we've done is that light blue space can be segregated off from the rest of the building and we could lease that space out. Um, there's a kitchen, restroom, lobby area and meeting space, all in that, retained in that light blue area. So we can rent this out to people for banquet, receptions, and it's not going to hold any more than twenty, thirty people. But it gives us that flexibility to do that and we can close off the offices and the Welcome Center part and they can have free access to that.
One, quick question, does it meet code?
Uh, yes, this is, we'll meet all codes, it's ADA accessible, as a matter of fact, we put, uh, the office part, um, the first part of Butterball is actually a foot higher than the bays. And so we've had to put in a twelve-foot ramp, so you can get from the first part down to the bottom part of the wheelchair. So it's, it meets all codes and all of that, so we're good with that. That's also one of the requirements to become an regional visitor information center, is it has to be ADA accessible, uh, so we planned the building with that in mind. Uh, the red is office space, so Main Street, DDA and Welcome, uh, the CBB will all be housed at this facility, so we will utilize the red space for office space. Uh, the dark blue space is the Welcome Center area. Uh, the yellow is actually a coffee slash pastry kiosk, we'll call it. Um, we're anticipate leasing that space out to someone to do coffee and pastries and things like that. Uh, the pink represents the retail gift shop, so there'll be retail gift shop sales. And then the exterior part will also be a revenue generator. We will revise and revamp the farmer's market, make it a craft farmer's market, extend the time period that it runs. But we will have that there on site in the exterior of the building. And the reason why we planned it that way, it's going to be very visible, there's a lot of traffic that comes through that area. So all the tents out there in the front, people will really be drawn to that, so we think that that'd be a big push to bring people there to participate in the farmer's market. And also the light plum color or whatever that is, um, will be programmed with food trucks, as you all know, uh, two or three months ago, you all passed the ordinance allowing food trucks. So we will lease space there on Mondays for food trucks, so we'll have outdoor eating space, uh, also a place for the food trucks. But then you have the exterior restroom, so there's an interior and exterior restroom there, so farmer's market and food truck will be able to utilize the restroom either inside or out for accessibility. So having said that, the next slide. Uh, the next slide kind of breaks out the proposal. The DDA has said that they feel good about this project, uh, I wouldn't say it was like, oh yeah, everybody jumping, but you know, they all got on board with it. This is, you know, really, a lot of thought was put into this, I feel really good about these numbers, just understanding the market. Uh, for example, if you look at the duplex, we know that one-bedroom loft apartments in downtown Villarica are demanding seven fifty, seven seventy-five a month in rent. We are suggesting that it be about five hundred is what we'll get per unit. We'll obviously get more than that, but we also have to take into account maintenance and upkeep, so there'll be contingencies that we'll need to set aside if something breaks. The ideal thing and what we'll be doing, pushing very quickly is to actually sell that duplex, because we don't want to be in the residential rental business. Um, so we'll be trying to unload that as quick as possible to someone who might be in.
Chief, ask your money-making project.
What's that?
So chief, ask some money-making project.
Oh, yes, chief, you know it, we got you, we'll talk, I'll come, I'll make an appointment. But as you can see, um, uh, the Main Street Board is already committed to lease space in this spot, so they've already agreed to their contribution. The DDA and CBB obviously being a component of that will also contribute. And then the rest will be through leases of the pop-up farmer's market and other revenue sources. And as you can see, I still haven't even put in the revenue for the food truck yet, so.
It's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per ten-year period, how much a year is that, is you really need?
It's, uh, forty-six, thirty-six.
Now, um, from the council's perspective, Chris and I have had multiple conversations. He's been extremely conservative, he has not even showed all the potential revenue sources here. Because of course, as I'm badgering him, I'm like, well, how come you haven't shown this, how come I haven't shown this? You know, and, and his answer was always consistently, you know, we're being conservative for a reason, so that we can make the dollars match. Because for instance, like, there's a billboard on there that, you know, we hadn't leased driven. You know, come January one, they're going to be able to lease that out, it's not there. There's, there's, um, the gas and billboards that, you know, the tourism previously had the contract on, they've got to redo that contract. So there's other revenue streams that, that I'm certainly aware of on the tourism side that he has not shown on his pro forma.
Well, really what I wanted to show was, the worst-case scenario, would we be able to pay this money back to the council and that's, or to the city? And that's what, you know, do I anticipate that we could probably do? I, I wouldn't say double that, but in revenue, we should be able to get close to double that this year.
If you're asking for a loan from the city of four hundred and fifty thousand, how much? It's not all at once, obviously, it's, uh.
Well, it will be, basically what we're requesting is a line of credit. And then we will, we, uh, met with Carol tomorrow, today, um, we'll actually, we'll put this project out for bid. Um, and then they, we will get the agency's lowest bidder and then we will go back.
So you met with Carol tomorrow, today, in order to get, have them get back to you next week?
And yesterday?
Yesterday, I met with Carol tomorrow, today, to get with me yesterday.
I guess the biggest issue to me is, is, you know, it sounds like a good project. We're going to sit here and talk about spending four hundred, committing four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on this hand. And then on this hand, we're yelling and screaming that we don't have enough money to pay our, for water and sewer projects that, uh, that we, we need as well. And, and, and the people that are going to be out here and on rate TV and whatever, uh, that, that might be an issue to them. And I, I like the project, I think it, it will do good, uh, but I'm not sure right now, for me personally, right now is, is the right time to do it. Because in my opinion, we're going to have to go up on some water and sewer rates that, that people are going to start yelling and screaming and, and you know, bottom line is, is if, if we go up on that and then give this, there's going to be at least four, maybe five different folks sitting up here next time.
But isn't it different giving it compared to we're loaning and this money come?
Well, this is.
True, but people, people are not going to look at that, they're going to say, well, that's four hundred and fifty thousand dollars over here, you could use toward the water and sewer problems that you're having.
I would say to, the, the flip side to that is, this is an investment, if you took this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars out, you're going to put it in investment, you know, you may or may not make.
We're not making three percent on anything, sir.
Three percent on anything, so. So I, you know, it's twofold, A, this money is, uh, if you look at it as an economic development. Obviously, we're not building a factory or a big plant, but at the end of the day, it's pumping, you're putting a public investment into your downtown, which will spark private investment. Even today, I've had a conversation with a gentleman owns a property across the street from Butterball, and his question to me was, well, where are we on the Welcome Center? I was like, well, I presented it to the council today, I'll let you know what they say next week. And so there's people that are waiting to see what's happening here, so. Not only are you getting this four hundred and fifty thousand dollars back over ten years, which is very aggressive, you're getting money on top of that, so the city has actually made money on it. But then you're sparking vacant buildings right now, you're potentially sparking investment and participation and job creation in those buildings. And so the benefit far outweighs the investment that the city's making.
We, we can't just narrow it down to just one project, one, one thing we've got to work on, because we obviously need to work on downtown too. That's the way I see it, um, that's the way I explain it to them, you know, you can't just set this off to the side while you work on water and sewer, getting that up to date.
I don't disagree, I'm just, you know.
We've got to bring downtown along with us, we've got to bring a lot of things along with us, we can't concentrate on one, we've got to do them all as much as we possibly can.
So, so question, um, from, from the staff side, so, um, because, because I haven't asked you this question, so, all right, so if you sell the duplex, where's that money go?
It's going to go to pay down the debt.
And what about the city's initial investment as well?
It's a nice gift to the DDA.
That's a deal you got to work out with the city mayor.
That's what I told, I told the folks at the DDA, I said, listen, DDA has an attorney, the city has attorney, we'll let them have those details, this is the big picture thing.
I know they gave it to you to develop, uh, so, so the council's going to have to, I just wanted to put that on the table and sorry I outed you in front of everybody, but.
No, that's fine, you know, I thought about that, because it was in the newspaper today that the city paid ninety, ninety-seven thousand, I was like, what? It's a great gift.
It's like, we're going to pay down this debt from this loan from the city, so, but, but again, you know, you can look at it as a revolving loan and, and that's something that the council's going to really have to digest and make sure that they're cool with.
Well, you know, I never give an opinion on anything and I'm not opinionated.
Do what?
I said that with a grin.
All right, come on, time's a clock, I mean, clocking or whatever.
All I wanted to know is that you knew you could pay back the loan, that's all I care about. All I care about.
Run it out there.
All right, heart house. Oh, Pete, I'm sorry, now I know why you're here.
Oh, Pete has to do.
Oh my gosh, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking, man, you got like a two-hour drive and you're sitting here and I'm like, man.
Been on and on.
He's engaged, he's listening, Pete, you need to ask about these things.
Alyssa.
Okay, you could have just texted me that, that answer and we would have been great. All right, um, ladies and gentlemen, um, before you, you have a memorandum of understanding. I recognize that it does not have an attachment to it. Um, the church did deliver the attachment, uh, we had a meeting on Wednesday, was it Wednesday or Tuesday? What day is today? Did we have it yesterday? Okay, it was yesterday. So, so we had this meeting this week with Carol tomorrow, yesterday for tomorrow. And so, um, uh, so, and, and, uh, the Public Works Department has looked over that. This agreement is simply between the city, uh, and the Villarica Baptist Church and basically says, uh, you give us the house, you give us the land in return, uh, we will lay sewer, um, across your property for which they've done the engineering with. And then the ultimate goal is to actually convey that sewer over to them and then it gets a sewer out to Van Wert Road.
And they're paying for taps.
They pay the tap and also they've already done their part, they've moved the hardhouse.
Is it in the MOU?
It is, I mean, it says that the sewer will be available to them at whatever the tap fee is at that time.
Thank you.
How does the new copy differ from what I read in my book?
Oh, uh, number eight was taken out, which said if the house is like destroyed or anything and moving.
Number nine, number nine was taken off.
Number nine was taken off, right.
Nine became eight.
Oh, I see.
And then the trustees, they said each of the trustees had to be listed, there would be three signers, so it just says, so, so I think he added, um, two additional trustees.
Okay, all right, thank you, I just wanted to know how it differed, because I didn't have time to read the new one.
So the hardhouse is in place, it has a foundation under it and it's been bricked up and all that. The historical society should be happy, once we finalize this deal, we'll have something to work on.
And then the church can relax, they're out of it.
They're out of it and then we work with.
All right, questions, concerns, all good there?
All good for me.
Anything from the city attorney? You almost look like you wanted to say something, so.
No, uh, we still got a, an agreement to negotiate with the historical society.
Have you ever played Santa Claus?
Oh, gosh.
Need to put on some weight to do so.
Their official name.
All right, all right, all right, let's move on, number two was asked by Protem Carter.
That was me, um, it comes to our attention quite often that we, um, make these houses, cut the grasses head-high. And then, um, they cut it one time, go away, and then we have trouble getting it done again. In particular, the one at the intersection of Thomas Dorsey and Spring comes to mind, the grass is, and they've been trying to get in touch with these folks to get the grass cut again. So we need to add teeth to our ordinance that, um, where we can go in, take care of this grass after they don't respond and put a lien on the place or something like that. We need some teeth in it, because nothing's getting, there's several of them around like that, nothing's happening. And one in particular, nobody ever, they says, um, Robert, they says, Robert sends the paperwork out and they don't respond to it. So we're kind of stuck with it.
The city attorney and I, um, uh, exchanged emails this week, um, uh, I, um, sent over a, um, uh, yeah, ordinance, um, that I think could potentially be a starting place. And, um, I know he's going to chew that up and sort of get us something back, um, after reviewing our existing code and maybe the proposed. Um, and hopefully we might have something for you for next month.
That'd be good, because we've been this way for about a year.
It, it is, Danny, we do have some existing laws and, and it goes back and forth between being a, an ordinance problem or an enforcement problem. You know, we've had times when we just simply haven't, we've had ordinances but nobody to enforce them.
Right, we need to have some teeth to these things.
My understanding is that we've got some pretty good code enforcement people on, on staff now, and so we do need to, to.
Need to help them out.
Build up an ordinance that they have the capability of enforcing.
Yeah, Robert's doing his job and he's sending these things out, but if they don't respond, you know, he's kind of stuck with it.
And, and so that you know, we have Robert, Ricky and Charlie.
Okay, number three, municipal code.
Um, there are three agreements in here, uh, one for the judge, one for the judge Protem, oh, it says Jude, um, Protem, sorry, that's a typo on the thing, I'll circle that real quick. And, um, for the solicitor, um, basically we don't have current agreements with them in place. This one's for the judge, says that we pay five hundred dollars per court session or a maximum of three thousand per month. The, uh, Protem, uh, is fifteen hundred dollars a month, um, which is, um, our, um, handling, um, the work at the jail. The solicitor, um, I'll bring you, um, the, um, the RFQ, the RFQ amount actually laid out the exact cost, um, when we, um, hired the solicitor. So we'll just write that amount in, um, for, um, uh, the next meeting. Okay, consent, agenda review, Madam Mayor. So, from a standpoint, let's see, you won't have a financial report, or will you? Do you want that repeated? She won't be here, so I'll have to read it, so do you want it or not, normally it comes off after you've done your work session. Take it off? What about fund balance?
You will be on, it'll be available for the people to go.
Oh, it's online, yes, sir.
So we just have to tell them, go to look.
A fund balance presentation? All right, uh, the alcoholic beverages, um, Micklin's going to send you, um, so we'll get the, um, updates. But that cannot be consent, because there will be changes, the alcoholic licenses of public hearing cannot be consent, uh, GDOT can be a consent, what's the will of the council?
It's non-controversial, it's.
It's not, but y'all have to be unanimous, GDOT maintenance agreement, free money.
They're going to pay us for us to move.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, I'm going to put a C next to that, uh, surplusing a vehicle?
I'm good.
All right. All right, go put a C next to that.
Does that money go back to drugs?
Um, we have to check to see where that one was purchased, sir.
Goes, goes as a cheap vacation fund.
Yes, um, the L-MIG?
That's good.
They're good with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Norfolk Southern, you're gonna have to have some discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Trailhead Project, that's a contract award.
That's a discussion.
Discussion, okay, let's go on to the next, um, Badge Fest, I think you all wanted to see some more of the, all the figures? Sort of-
Yeah, there's some, there's some issues.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, Nugget Drop?
I'm good with that one.
Nugget Drop? Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Nugget Drop is consent.
Yeah.
Okay, Wayfinding? The Wayfinding, the E1?
That's the directional signs.
The directional signs?
Seems like people might wanna know about that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bring them back.
Both of those do.
Welcome Center, we'll bring them back.
Definitely.
The Hart House?
I'm good with that one.
Same with you.
Everybody, where, where-
Chris hasn't seen you the whole time.
Hart House?
If Mr. Mecklen's okay with it, I am.
Oh, yes, I am.
Everybody good with Hart House?
Yep.
Okay. All right, uh, municipal court agreements, um, I have to make that one change, but you, you already sort of approved it when you hired, so.
Change to do the J and B.
So.
I'd like to, I'd like for that to show up as a, uh, on, on the minutes, though, as being officially approved.
All right, so here is what I have on consent, I have, uh, C is in Charlie, uh, one, C is in Charlie two, C is in Charlie three, D is in David three, F is in Frank, number one.
Talking about items to be on a consent agenda, so don't be discussing them.
All right, thank you, everybody, wow, wazza, 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 got some work done.
Hey, gee, why, it's your fault being here so dang late.
Yes, sir, I'll take the money for that, it won't happen again.
I've got a meeting going on, man.
Citizens.